Mission is resumed.
Good morning, everybody. We commence with an acknowledgement of country. I wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Iora Nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner Ryan and I are located. I also acknowledge the Turbo and Jaggaerah Nations upon whose lands our hearing room in Brisbane is located, and Commissioner Atkinson is of course there, and the Warriringjiri people of the Kulin Nation upon whose lands Commissioner Galberly is located. I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people who were following this hearing on the live stream. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning Commissioners and good morning to everyone following the live webcast. Just before we come to our first witnesses, Commissioners, you may recall I made reference to some work of Professor Karen Fisher yesterday in the opening address. And Professor Fisher is not giving evidence in person in this public hearing, but she has provided to us a statement and a number of documents recording her research. Professor Fisher is a professor at the Social Policy Research Centre at the University of New South Wales. She leads the Disability Policy Research Programme at the centre, and she's responsible for research evaluation of disability and mental health policy in Australia and China. Among the pieces of research that she has provided to the Royal Commission includes some research on policies that change attitudes towards people with disability, and also some research work on perspectives of people with intellectual disability about jobs and support. So Commissioners, could you receive into evidence the statement of Professor Fisher and the various documents accompanying her statement? You'll find the material in tender bundle part B behind tab 26 through to tab 33. And Commissioners, if you could mark the exhibit 9.5.1 for the statement... Sorry, 9.5 for the statement, and the exhibits 9.5.1 through to 9.5.7.
Yes, thank you, that can be done.
So Commissioners, our first two witnesses for today are giving evidence together, and they're joining us from Hobart in Tasmania. And I'll just check that they've come into the hearing room.
They're on screen.
Yeah, we're on screen.
Right, okay.
Yes, we can see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Those following the webcast may not know that what I'm seeing is a screen of a large number of people. I'm not necessarily sure who's here and who's not here. But I'm very pleased to welcome Yuri and Edward Sianzki from Hobart. And the first thing they need to do is to take their oaths or affirmations.
Thank you very much to both of you for coming to give evidence today. We very much appreciate it. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions that will be given by my associate for the administration of the oath, thank you very much.
I will read you both the oath. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Ms Eastman will now ask us some questions.
Yuri, can I start with you? Your full name is Yuri Edward Sianzki?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
And you have provided a statement to the Royal Commission?
Yes, I have indeed, yes.
And that statement was made on the 25th of November this year?
Uh, yes, yep.
And have you got a copy of the statement with you?
Uh, yes, I've got it here.
And can you tell the Royal Commission that what's in the statement is true?
Uh, yeah, to my knowledge, yeah, most of it's, oh, it's true, I suppose, yeah.
But you've done your best to tell the truth in the statement.
Uh, yes, yes.
And part of it is that you can't remember absolutely every date or everything that might have occurred, but you've done your very best, is that right?
Uh, yes, yes, I have.
Right. Commissioners, could you mark Yuri's statement as exhibit 9.6?
Yes. Thank you.
Now, the other gentleman on the screen, you are Edward Sianzki?
I am.
And you've made a statement for the Royal Commission as well?
I have.
And your statement was made on the 19th of November this year?
Uh, that's correct.
And are the contents of the statement true?
For the best of my ability, yes.
Right. Now, I think I can hear Wolfgang, who's joining you, give evidence, but I won't ask him about his evidence.
No, thank you.
Now, people following the webcast can hear perhaps some background noise, that's Wolfgang.
That's Wolfie, yeah.
Commissioners, could you receive Mr Sianzki's evidence as exhibit 9.7? Sorry, 9.7?
Yes, that can be done.
All right. Now Yuri, can I start with you? You're 47 years old?
Uh, yes, yeah, 47.
You live in Tasmania, in Hobart?
Uh, yes.
And you live in a flat? You live independently in a flat, is that right?
Yes, I live by myself in a flat, yes.
Now, you've been diagnosed with schizophrenia?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And that happened when you were about 19 years old?
Uh, yes, around there, 19, 20, yeah.
And you tell the Royal Commission something about that diagnosis when you were a teenager? What can you remember about being diagnosed with schizophrenia? And what were you doing around that time?
Um, yeah, I was studying mechanical engineering at the time, and, um, I just, I don't know, I lost the plot for a while and, um, and after a couple of months, I'd sort of like seek my family for help, so they sent me to the doctors and all that. And yeah, it took about 10, 11 years or so to get fixed up a bit, but yeah, to come back.
Before, yeah, before you were diagnosed, you said to the Royal Commission in your statement this, can I read this? "My mind had started to feel like it was closing down and the doors were shutting. I was hearing voices and I felt like my intelligence was taken away from me. And I was in and out of hospital a lot, but slowly the medication started to make me feel better."
Yeah, yes.
Now Yuri, uh, oh Ed, can I come to you? Yuri's your eldest child?
He is, yep.
And you remember him as a child when he was at school, being a happy and intelligent and very engaged child? What can you tell us about Yuri at school?
Oh yes, I think Yuri was a good student. Um, he liked sport, and he was involved in all kinds of activities. Um, and, uh, no, he was a good lad.
And what stage did you get up to at school, Yuri? Did you finish year 12?
Uh, no, I finished year 11 and then I studied mechanical engineering and mechanics and, yeah, bartender inclining and automotive mechanics after that.
Okay. And Ed, Yuri developed a drug and alcohol problem in his late teens and twenties, is that right?
He did, and again, I don't know whether he was using drugs or drugs and alcohol to masquerade the symptoms of schizophrenia, or whether that was a thing that precipitated the illness. I don't know, to this day, I just don't know.
And but the symptoms really came to the fore when Yuri was studying for the Diploma of Mechanical Engineering, is that right?
That's right, yes, yes. Um, in the year 11, he, uh, he didn't manifest any of those, any of those symptoms at school, and college, but he did, but in that first year of TAFE, he did.
That was a pretty challenging year, wasn't it?
Uh, I think, I think for Yuri and for all of us, I think, because we didn't know what we were dealing with. Um, and, uh, and the drugs and the alcohol didn't help at all. You know, that was a very difficult period of time for all of us.
I think you've told the Royal Commission that Yuri's life took a downward trajectory and his psychotic episodes resulted in many hospitalisations. And do you feel that marred his effort for further studies, is that right?
Definitely, yeah, yeah. Um, Yuri had the, he had the difficulty of getting the right medication for his, uh, for his psychosis, and, uh, and there was also the problem of Yuri not taking his medication, and there's all kinds of dramas we had with him. Um, and it wasn't until the fortnightly depot injections became available that Yuri stabilised.
And was Yuri living with you at the time of the onset of the illness?
Yes, he was, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And did that have an impact on the family?
Oh, definitely. Um, we have two other children and they're close together, and I found myself, all my concentration seemed to be on Yuri and not the other two. Um, so it was a very difficult time, I think, for all of us.
Uh, Yuri, one matter for you is that you weren't able to finish the course, were you, on the mechanical engineering?
Uh, no, I did about three and a half years of it. I had about, yeah, about six months left to study it. I went back about four years later and I did two of the courses, so there wasn't much left, but I think the courses, the whole structure's changed now, so... But to complete it, I was nearly pretty close, yeah.
Now, you know, this hearing is about looking at the issues of employment, so can I turn now to ask you some questions about finding jobs and what your experience has been? So Yuri, I think it's hard, isn't it, to remember all of the dates and the times that have occurred over the years when you've looked for different jobs, is that right?
Yes.
But trying to do the best that you can, you think sometime around 1997, you were doing a trades apprenticeship? And that was around the time that you were also doing the study for mechanical engineering, is that right?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, and if you've got your statement, I'm having a look at that as well. So that's paragraph 10, if that helps you remember.
Yes.
And because you became unwell, you not only stopped studying the TAFE, but you also stopped the apprenticeship?
Yes.
And from the late 1990s, for a number of years, you really weren't doing anything, were you?
Um, no, 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 I totally like sat down. I was like sleeping a lot every day. I was taking respiratory pills at the time and that would make me very, very tired, so I couldn't go out and do things. I'd try to go surfing and that on the weekends, or try to do a little bit of sport or just go for walks, but it just wasn't helping my mind, just went, yeah. And then I ended back in hospital for three to six months and then, and then, and then it sort of like turned around and everything changed and I started a lot like repairing after a while, sort of thing, yeah.
I'll come to the, I'll come to, because I want to ask you about the repairing, so I'll come to that in a moment. But do you remember initially you were on some unemployment benefits, like the Dole at the beginning?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, I was on, yeah, 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 the Dole at the time.
And that meant that you had to try to look for jobs at the same time as not feeling particularly well, is that right?
Yeah, yes, I had to look for four jobs, uh, four and nine.
And in about 1998, somewhere around that time, that's when you applied for a disability support pension?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, about that time, yeah.
And you got the support pension, was approved, and you, because you were not able to work more than eight hours a week, is that right?
Um, yes, because I was getting injections at the time, so, um, so they thought that put me on the disability pension, so like, um, yeah, 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 and I could only work part-time.
And you've been on the DSP now for about 25 years?
Uh, yes, about that long, yes.
All right. Ed, can I ask you about this period of time? Because when Yuri was receiving the unemployment benefits at the beginning, he had to apply for jobs and you helped him put in numerous applications to find work.
Oh, yeah.
And you put this in your statement as well. What can you tell the Royal Commission about what you did to help Yuri put in applications for jobs? What type of jobs were you looking for? And what came of these applications?
Well, I suppose I was looking for jobs that I thought Yuri could do and that also were within Yuri's interest range. And so I scoured the newspapers for advertisements and I just, I remember just typing up all of his applications and, um, and it got to a stage where I just felt the whole thing was just futile in the end. But I kept trying and Yuri got one or two sort of appointments and nothing came of them. It was just a big effort, but there was no, there's no mechanism in place to help him. And I really felt that there was no support available for dads like Yuri's dad to help, to help him. Yeah, I just felt, I just felt bereft of any support from outside. And I felt I was kind of beavering away and getting nowhere.
And you got to a point, didn't you, that an employment agency became involved and you took a bit of a step back after that, is that right?
Yes, yes, I was quite happy to step back in terms of, because I knew that I didn't have expertise to help Yuri. And when I did hear that there was an employment agency that Yuri was going to, I felt a sense of relief because I thought, oh, well, here's a chance for Yuri to get something. Because they would know more than, more than I did. Um, so that was, that was the next phase, yep.
And Yuri, in this next phase, you did some training courses to help you look for particular types of work. And one of the training courses you did was as a bartender. What can you tell the Royal Commission about that course? And did you learn anything from that course?
Um, yeah, I did a six-weeks course in bartending at Drystar House in Hobart City Central. And yeah, yeah, I was pretty good. I learned a lot of interesting things and, um, yeah, I just did it for the, I don't know, just a lot of broadening from the engineering and the apprenticeship and all that, and then go off and try something that was totally different at the time, so... Yeah, and I passed it really well. I got like good scores and things were pretty good, like, yeah, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
And did you do any work experience while you were doing the bartending course?
Uh, yes, I did a one-day's work experience and yeah, I found that most enjoyable and yeah, quite pleasant.
And did that all lead to you getting a job as a bartender or working in a bar or pub in Hobart?
Um, unfortunately it didn't. I sent so many resumes to all the bars around Hobart, around the suburbs, all that kind of thing, and unfortunately there was no, no, no phone call or letter or anything. But I tried hard, but yeah, but at least I achieved it for my own self-esteem, so it was pretty good.
When you sent the resumes and applications out, did you tell the employers that you had schizophrenia?
Um, no, I didn't at the time. Uh, I might have mentioned that because I was on the disability pension. But, um, yeah, at that time, I was showing no signs of sickness or anything. I was really, really good and, you know, I was looking through rose-coloured glasses and it was really good.
So this was a time when you'd started on the injections and your health was stable?
Yes, yeah.
And you're really like raring to go for getting a job, is that right?
Yeah, 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 I thought my future was going to open up and that, you know, I was gonna like head to someone's, you know, like business and then, you know, totally expand or do whatever. Um, yeah, I was really switched on at the time.
And not getting a job out of the bartending course? And I think you tried to get a job for about two years?
Yes.
That did not go well in terms of how you felt in yourself, did it?
Um, uh, no, I didn't, but I always found other ways besides money to slide, do things. Um, but yeah, yeah, it was just hard getting like knockbacks and having so many more mates to like at the time and having knockbacks and only getting like, um, below their qualifications, like work and things, it was a bit hard, sort of, yeah, but...
So you got a couple of odd jobs, I think around 2007, you did some plastering work for a mate, is that right?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And you barely got paid anything for doing that work?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And you did some more training, didn't you? And that, you had a bit of a period of time working as a cleaner?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, um, after I did the bartending, I couldn't find a bartender's job, so I did the cleaning certificate, I think it was about back then somewhere, yeah, yeah. And I had, I spent two years looking for a cleaning job and there just wasn't any. But, um, yeah, our kids don't try, no.
You did, you did get a cleaning job, doing some cleaning in a music auditorium only, but that was only a couple of days a week, is that right?
Yeah, I was working about three to four days a week and it lasted for two weeks and somehow the business shut down or something, or I just got told one day, um, um, you can't work anymore, but I didn't get sent a letter or told and it was mine. Yeah, my father sent them a lot of letters asking, can we have a letter saying why I've been, so like sacked from the job? And there was no explanation or nothing.
And then you've had a job with another mate doing some work on a building site, is that right?
Uh, yes.
And you weren't trained, were you, to do work on a building site?
No, no, I was just mainly a labourer, just to like bring tools, bring, um, so like, um, things around and to learn how to build a house. But, um, yeah, it was more complicated than what I thought and sort of, but it was interesting, but a lot of fun, but, hmm.
Now, Ed, you've watched Yuri go through these phases of the bartending course, the cleaning certificate, having these jobs on doing the plastering and the building. And you've told the Royal Commission that you feel that Yuri's been exploited. Can you tell the Royal Commission why you feel that way?
Yes, because I think the people who employed, inverted commas, Yuri, I think they realised that Yuri was on a disability support pension and that he couldn't earn more than a certain amount. And they didn't pay him anywhere near what he was, anywhere near, near the work that he was doing. And I feel that particularly the plastering job that he had, Yuri was sort of struggling to work, you know, five days a week or whatever at that time. But he wasn't paid, he wasn't paid for, for the, for doing more. I mean, he was paid, he was paid as if he was doing a few hours a week, you know, and not, and not, um... And I'm struggling, I'm struggling right now because I realise that one of the things that I was really, really, that bugged me was, I knew Yuri was being exploited, but I thought to myself now, it's better for Yuri to go out and do something rather than stay home in his flat all day and do nothing. And I thought, I thought that was, I felt the system had failed Yuri in that Yuri wasn't able to get a proper, a proper job. And as a result, he was sort of open to exploitation. And he was open to people who knew that, who knew what Yuri's situation was, and yet they exploited him. And it made me really angry. I felt really angry that someone like Yuri was put in this position. But again, as I said before, it provided an opportunity for Yuri to go out and do something, you know? And I thought he might acquire a few skills that he could perhaps capitalise on down the track in a fairer way. But the whole system is really up against people like Yuri with a mental illness because the, a mental illness is a condition that ebbs and flows. You can't get a, Yuri can't risk losing his disability support pension because he's, if he does that, then he has to then go back and renegotiate his pension. And that's, that's, that's a huge task. On the other hand, he's also open to exploitation. So he's kind of caught in between this, this sort of no man's land, which is, you know, really awful.
Have the, have the two of you tried to sort of work out with Yuri on the DSP? How much work he can do, what's the risk to his pension? How do you work those things out?
Oh, the goodness knows.
Yeah, we think just part-time work, just because full-time might be, I don't know, might be against OHN standards or something, I don't know.
But the whole point is Yuri cannot work full-time. I mean, he doesn't have the capacity to work full-time. And the reason why I wrote, I put the submission into the Commission was because I wanted Yuri to have the opportunity of doing something. I saw some people who gave witnesses yesterday and they spoke about having part-time work and the sense of fulfilment and the sense of, of self-esteem that this gave them, you know? Yuri's not asking for full-time work. Yuri's just asking for the opportunity to do somehow a few hours per day, somewhere, at a job that gives him some kind of satisfaction, some kind of a feeling of fulfilment.
This has been, you know, this has been a quest for 25 years.
For 25 years, yeah, and we still can't find anything, you know? It's, it's as if, as Yuri said, you know, like everything's just shut down in front of him, you know? Like, it's, and, and I know for a fact that Yuri's not the only person like this. Yuri represents many, many people who are in this situation. They're, they have a mental illness, they're put on a disability support pension, and then they're forgotten about.
Well, Ed, I think you say in your statement you gained the impression that Yuri was placed in the quote "too hard basket", and why did you, why did you think that?
He's placed in a cul-de-sac of neglect. And I believe that because 25, 25 years of Yuri trying to get a job has convinced me that it is, it really is a cul-de-sac of neglect. And it's shameful because I didn't realise that Australia had actually signed up a UN convention on the rights of people with disability. And paragraph 27 of that document says that everyone's got the right to a job of some kind. Now, if the conditions are not available for people to, or the structures aren't available for people like Yuri to get a job, then they should be.
So you're, you're now at a point where, Ed, you still have hope for Yuri?
Yes, I do have hope because I always have hope. That's part of, part of my make-up, I think, to have hope.
You think maybe Yuri, and I don't know whether you agree with your dad here, but whether you look at some kind of study or doing some further courses that will actually lead to a job rather than just study for the sake of study, is that right?
Um, yeah, but I think mainly the study... Um, yeah, but I I think mainly the study would just be like for something that's I've gotta find something that 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 that's like mine in the future. If I was well enough, I'd like to study to become a doctor or I'd go and do and I I take course or something in computers, something to fix up, you know, things, because I've done a bit of mechanical engineering. I don't know, um, like, yeah, I've gotta find some type of study that's gonna be so like intelligent in 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 the way, but also to lead me somewhere so I can use that bit to, you know, carry on with my life.
Hmm. And Ed, what do you, you've got a a view that uh Yuri would be well placed to do work such as assembling small motors or working in the recycling area or even getting into crafts and jewellery making. You think that yeah, Yuri's got a lot of skills to offer, is that right?
Yuri, along with a lot of people like Yuri, are very talented in 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 certain areas. A- and and the trick is to find, not to find, not to get Yuri to 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 get a to get a it's not a case of 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 fitting the person to the job, it's a case of fitting the the job to the person. And if Yuri Yuri has these these talents and i- if he could find a find work to fit that, then that would be of enormous benefit because a person with a mental illness i- i- that that they do start way, way behind the line, uh behind the starting line. And the gun goes off and there's still the starting blocks. So so what Yuri needs is i- uh is for someone to identify his skills and then find work that is able to accommodate them.
What what sort of supports are uh available for Yuri at the moment? Yuri, you can comment on this or Ed, I mean, what supports are around you at the moment to achieve this objective of either further study or finding the employment that you've talked about?
Yeah, um, uh, th- there's not eh much opportunity for me at the moment. I haven't got N D I S or anything like that, like organising to help me or anything, um. Uh, it's quite hard. The employment agencies I used to go to many years ago, like they've uh shut down and non-functional now. And um, yeah, the um, yeah, and I hope that at this hearing that it'll like I'll 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 be able to get somewhere, so someone will be able to organise. Um, uh, other than that, I just have to go to Centrelink or something and organise through them or um, but I I don't have a place where where I get my injections is at a um a a local doctor, so it's not through through the um uh so like a psychiatric medium anymore. It's 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 just um, you know, a local doctor, so I don't get to um, hand over any information to find many leads or anything, so it's quite hard.
Yeah, and Ed, what's your perception at the moment about the supports around Yuri to look for a job now at the age forty-seven?
I think initially Yuri Yuri was um, uh, we had a um a support service down here for people with uh mental illness, which was very, very good. It was a local um, a local uh place. And um uh while Yuri was with us, they they actually um Yuri was part of part of that um part of that area that was serviced and uh and they provided Yuri with, I think they went out of their way to try to find Yuri work and to support and to support Yuri. And then when Yuri moved to his current um place, um, he moved out out of that district into another district, another mental health dis- di- district. And and I I believe they 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 did nothing for him. In fact, they they told him that well, because of your injections, you can't work. And effectively, they shut him down. Um, and uh so so he's had no support from uh from the mental health uh area. Um, the only support he gets is uh and we're and we're grateful, I'm grateful for this because this is this is one of the problems that Yuri had was to get the injection on a regular basis because if he doesn't have his injection fortnightly, Yuri does tend to stray a little bit. Um, now Yuri's doing remarkably well today because normally your injection is due on Thursday, isn't it? This Thursday, yeah. So so as it as it comes towards the end of the that two-week cycle, you know, his he he's not as perhaps as functioning as as he would be at the beginning of the cycle. You know, so so um, but if he misses out on his injection, it becomes very, very difficult. Um, um, so uh the support that he had, he 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 seems to have the support for his for his injection there, but nothing else, there's nothing else. Uh, he's got his D S, as far as I feel as though the government thinks so, is now they've done their job. He's got his pension, accommodation, which is good, it's fantastic. And also his um his injection, so he's okay. But 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 for the work area, there there's nothing, there's no support in that area whatsoever.
Now, Ed, your concern is not just for Yuri and his generation, but it's also for the next generation.
Hmm, hmm.
So Yuri, you have a son who we've called Robert for the purpose of this hearing and Ed, you're Robert's grandfather and you were the custodial grandfather for about a period of ten years.
I was, I I was.
Robert's now twenty-two years old.
Yep, yes.
In around twenty seventeen, Robert was diagnosed with schizophrenia.
Uh, that's correct, yeah.
And he is currently in a mental health facility outside Hobart and you tell the Royal Commission that he's been well looked after.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But looking at your son and your grandson, you really see some differences between their opportunities, but also have this the real concern that Robert doesn't have the same experience as Yuri. Can you tell the Royal Commission a little bit about that?
Yes, I can. Um, uh, Robert's under the care of the N D I, uh, under the care of in of an N D I S package and uh and I think that I'm not too sure of the uh of the um of the actual uh refinement of the package, but 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 it does allow him the opportunity of of going out and uh a- and getting work or seeking work. So he's had up to now, um, he's had about seven appointments uh uh for people and and he's had seven, about seven tries at at getting a job of some kind. So um, there's that support. And when I heard about that and I I see Yuri's position, um, Yuri's way behind the eight ball and uh and Robert's, Robert does have some support in getting work. Um, at this stage, uh, uh, he he, I think he, I think Robert's um problems are also, apart from mental, there are also physical problems. Um, so I think it might be a bit more difficult to find the right wo- job for him. But I'm I'm just worried that um down the track, he will lose that support, you know, and eventually end up uh on his own, trying to uh scrounge jobs. Um, and I use that word loosely, but um, you know, but but that's what you end up doing wh- when you're in a situation like uh like Robert is, um, eventually, you know, you just uh, you take what comes and then you're open, open to more exploi- exploitation. Um, and and Robert, Robert's on a disability, on a disability pension, um. So he's got that, he's got that uh as his safety net, so he can operate from that. And uh at this stage of the game, I don't know what his future's going to be. I I just don't know, no, um.
Ed, Ed and Yuri, I feel like our time's gone very quickly and you've given us a a window into your lives and your experiences and your hopes for the future. Uh, can you, each of you want to say something to the Royal Commissioners who have been listening to your evidence and they may have a question in a moment? Here's for each of you, what what do you think needs to change? So Yuri, you still have hope for a job, but Ed also that hope for Robert will be something that means Robert doesn't have the experiences that his father's had. Who'd like to go first, Yuri?
Uh, yeah, 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 I'd just like to have the experience to be able to get a job and be able to find any type of study I can study. Um, um, my brain's still young and active sort of thing, it's not too old and I'm full of cobwebs, yes, so um, yeah. And then ho- hopefully this um hearing will like find that way for me.
Thank you, Yuri. Ed?
Well, Yuri's correct, he's like, he's not that old. I've just finished a Bachelor of Philosophy and uh I'm also doing a Bachelor of Dementia Care, so at my age, um, you know, anything's possible. And I really believe that Yuri Yuri and both Yuri Yuri and Robert would have the opportunity of 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 uh using their gifts and their talents if the structures were in place to help him. But to help both Yuri and and Robert. If the structures are not in place, then then they're uh they're flan- and they will flounder.
And I thank you both very much for uh sharing your time and your stories with the Royal Commission today. And I'll just ask the Commissioners whether they have any questions.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll ask first Commissioner Galbally, who is in Melbourne, if she has any questions.
No questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
And and then Commissioner Atkinson, who is in our Brisbane hearing room.
No, thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your evidence.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ryan, who was with me, is it?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, but I do wanna thank Yuri and his dad for uh being so open about their lives in such a public domain. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful to hear from you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Yuri and Ed, if I may call you that, um, I echo those sentiments. I do have one question we heard yesterday about what seems to an outsider like me to be an extraordinarily complicated system. But it did involve the someone or people on the disability support pension being referred by Centrelink to a disability employment service. And I wonder whether that has ever occurred, or at least has occurred in the last, say, eight or ten years.
Yeah, it's been about 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 seven, seven to eight years or so, yeah, um.
Since that happened.
Yeah, about that, yeah, about seven, seven years, I think, somewhere there.
And has anybody explained why there hasn't been a further referral to the Disability Employment Service?
N- no, there hasn't been at all and no one's traced it up, I don't think, and uh, no.
Hmm, hmm.
Well, I would like to uh thank you on behalf of all the Commissioners. First of all, for putting in the submission, which we very much appreciate, and for giving your evidence today and providing the statements that you have. Uh, your evidence has been very, very important for the Royal Commission. Uh, Yuri, Yuri, I'd like to wish you uh every success in obtaining employment. I hope that does come about. And Ed, congratulations on your Bachelor of Philosophy and all the best with your studies for the future. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, we now move to the Brisbane Hearing Room. And the next witness will be giving evidence in Brisbane and uh we'll hand over to Ms Fraser.
Yes, Ms Fraser.
We will now take the evidence of Dr Beth McInally.
Thank you. Just wait for um Dr McInally to come on the screen. Dr McInally, good morning and thank you very much for joining the Commission in the Brisbane Hearing Room. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who is in the same room, she will administer the oath to you. Thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Ms Fraser will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dr McInally, could I ask you to start by stating your full name for the Commission?
Dr Beth McInally.
And for the purpose of the evidence today, are you happy for me to refer to you as Dr McInally or Beth?
Beth.
Beth, you provided a statement to the Commission dated one December two thousand and twenty. Uh, do you have a copy of that statement with you now?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the contents of that statement?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or amendments that you would like to make?
No, thank you.
And the contents of the statement are true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Commissioners, you will find a copy of Dr McInally's statement in tender bundle A, Part A at tab five point one. I ask to tender the statement into evidence and that it be marked Exhibit nine point eight.
Yes, thank you.
Beth, you studied psychology at university, didn't you?
Yes.
And in two thousand and thirteen, you obtained a PhD in social psychology.
Yes.
And you now work full-time for a government department.
Yes.
Beth, you personally consider that the evidence that you are going to give today to the Royal Commission does not arise out of any particular incident of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation that you consider you have suffered, don't you?
Yes.
But in telling your own story and giving your evidence today, you hope to shed some light on some of the systemic barriers faced by many people with disability in seeking in seeking and maintaining employment.
Yes, that's right.
Beth, before I move to address some specifics of your evidence, I think it would be useful for the Commission to get a sense of who you are. Are you happy for me to explore some some of these sorts of questions?
Yes.
You live independently?
Yes.
And you move freely within your community?
Yes.
You would describe yourself as an independent person?
Yes.
What does your independence mean to you?
It means a lot to me. It means that I can access what I need to um independently, that I can uh spend time with my friends, have a job. It's really important to me to be independent and not have to rely on anyone else to do the things that I want to.
And despite having a PhD and obtaining full-time employment, your reality is that it is at times whilst you are employed in a workplace that you are most aware of your disability. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I think the workplace is one of the times that makes you feel, that makes me feel the most disabled at times.
And can you explain to me the reasons for that?
I think it's because as a person who lives independently, I've spent a lot of time and effort on making sure that the places that I go, where I live, where I where I socialise are places that are set up in a way that's easy for me to access and that I can be myself and be independent. Whereas you don't have that control in the workplace. And the way that the workplace is set up is often not set up in a way that works best for me, um, especially when you're new to a workplace.
But it might actually be more than that, mightn't it? It, if I was to say to you that you feel that but for your disability, you would be capable of doing any job in your industry, is that something that you would agree with?
Yeah, I think the um even going back to what I chose to study, it, I thought a lot about what I could study in terms of what I would a- actually be able to get a job, um, considering my physical limitations. So I hoped that studying psychology would not be something where I would be limited in my professional opportunities. Uh, and then when it go, went to finding a job, um, there's a lot of barriers that you face as a person with a disability to finding a job that you will be able to be successful in. Um, a lot of jobs require you to have a driver's licence, to be able to travel freely um and independently, to um, a lot of jobs are located in locations that I can't easily access via public transport. Or they're in buildings that don't have access to begin with, or the physical requirements of the job may not be possible for me as well. So there was a lot of limitations around the type of job that I knew that I would be able to do when I started looking for employment.
So your disability really limited you in terms of the actual career that you pursued. And then once you'd made that decision, it had placed further limitations on you in terms of the sort of job that you would pursue within your then-chosen career?
Yeah.
Do you mind me asking, sorry, can I just interrupt to ask, I I see you have a PhD in social psychology. What exactly is social psychology?
Um, social psychology focuses on looking at relationships between people a lot of the time, so my PhD was looking at the in interpersonal impact of rejection. So what happens to people when they're when they're rejected, how it impacts their subsequent communication with other people and and how it makes them feel. So social psychology really, I mean, there's a, it's a huge field, so there's a lot of different facets, but it really looks into human interpersonal behaviour.
And when you did your, I assume, a thesis, were you specifically concerned with? And when you did your, I assume, a thesis, were you specifically concerned with people with disability who were rejected, or was it a more general thesis?
No, I've been a bit late to the, um, to the advocacy type of motivation in my life. It took me a long time to be comfortable enough with myself to start to recognise that it was important to talk about the challenges that I faced and what I wish would change. So, no, my PhD was just was not focused on disability. It was about interpersonal rejection in in general.
Thank you very much.
Beth, I'd just like to note that I think, given your age, you're not late to anything. Beth, you first entered the workforce when you were at university?
Yes.
And you did this working at the university itself?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about the work that you did at the university, what sort of work you did?
Yes, I was lucky to be able to get some research assistant work when I was at university. My mother was is also an academic, so I had some understanding of how the department worked. And I applied for some, actually, to be honest, I don't remember how I got the jobs, but I got some RA jobs. And I also then, when I started doing my post-grad, I worked as a tutor, which is very common for people doing their thesis. And I also did some sessional lecturing.
And by RA, you mean research assistant?
Sorry, yes, research assistant, yeah.
How did your disability impact on the work that you did at the university?
So for the research assistant work, it didn't too much because I mostly did boring data entry. So I was able to do that, being good with the computers. When I was a tutor, it was, it didn't stop me from being a good tutor, I don't think, but like I experienced in general in the workplace, there were a number of things, challenges, that I had to independently overcome to make sure that I could be a good tutor. For example, my memory is that there was no institutional support for ensuring that the spaces in which I taught were going to work for me, not just in terms of the location of the room, but in terms of the equipment that I needed to use. So my memory is that I often had my friends come along with me to make sure that I could navigate the space and also use the equipment that was provided. And sometimes I would call on students to, you know, reach something that I couldn't that I couldn't reach, like the light switches. So although at the time I didn't probably see it as a huge barrier because I was used to overcoming challenges like this, looking back, it would have made my job easier and more comfortable if there had been more appreciation of the need to address those challenges before I started doing the role.
Yeah. So in the absence, in the absence of any kind of institutional support, to use your expression, it was really up to you to problem solve on a daily basis whilst also, you know, fulfilling the role as a tutor and and an academic.
Yes.
You finished your studies in two thousand and thirteen, and that was the first time that you turned your mind to obtaining employment outside of the university setting?
Yes.
Can you explain to me how your disability impacted on the process of actually applying for jobs?
Yeah, so I guess I was then faced with realising the large amount of jobs that were just not going to work for me. Like I touched on before, there's a number of things that I had to consider. Given that I don't drive, I had to make sure that I could access my job via public transport. And even though you nicely said I'm not very old, back then the buses weren't all accessible. So it was about really thinking about the location of the job in terms of where it was situated in in the Brisbane area. And then I had to put thought into whether the building where the workplace was was actually going to be accessible as well. And then look at the actual specifications of the job around the requirement to drive or travel independently or do tasks that I didn't think physically I would be able to do. And I think at that stage, rather than go for everything and face the challenges, I just ruled those ones out that had the big challenges that were apparent to me at the time. So it really limited the number of jobs that I was able to apply for.
And in your experience, how proactively do employers actually address, you know, access needs and and you know, possible accommodations that they can provide a person with a disability at the point of recruitment?
I'm not sure if it's changed in a good way now, but I don't remember any, anything being addressed when I was looking for jobs. I don't remember ever reading about whether or not the workplace considered themselves to be accessible, about any way to find out more information about that. My memory is that there was no information provided about anything to do with inclusion or access.
So again, it was up to you.
Yes.
Prior to working at the department where you now work, you worked at a large organisation, is that correct?
Yes.
And how did you get that job?
I knew about the job through a friend who worked in the organisation, but I applied for the job through a formal advertisement and job application process.
And you physically attended an interview?
Yes.
Yeah. And when you started in the position, was there a workplace assessment of any description undertaken for you?
My memory is that there was not any. I don't remember it being offered to me. I know I didn't, there was nothing done at the time when I started. No.
And it was a job that required you to work at a at a desk, at a workstation?
Yes.
When you first arrived for your first day at work at that large organisation, was your workstation or work area accessible to you?
It was accessible in that I could drive my chair to the workstation. But no, the the way it was set up was quite challenging because I have very short arms and often things are placed where an average able-sized body, average-sized able-bodied person would be able to reach. So, no, there's, it might, I need to do quite a bit of adjustment to my computer and the keyboard and all that in order for them to be able, for me to be able to use them independently, and that hadn't taken place.
So how did you deal with that?
I I asked colleagues for help is my memory of how I overcome it, which it often is the way that I dealt with things that weren't set up adequately for me in the workplace.
And these would have been colleagues that you'd met for the first time that day?
I did know one formally, but the rest were all new to me, yes.
And can you tell me, how does it make you feel when you've got to ask students at the university or, you know, new work colleagues? How does it make you feel when you've got to ask these people to assist you?
At the time, I think I pretend that I don't mind and use humour to overcome the uncomfortableness, but I feel embarrassed and incompetent because I have very high standards for myself and I like to think that I come across as independent and capable. And I don't feel that way when I need to ask colleagues for help for things that other people would never even think of needing help for.
And yet it's not really your incompetency, is it? It's the incompetency on the person who employed you and met you at an interview and placed you at a workstation where they put the computer too far back. It's really their incompetence, isn't it?
Yes, I now realise that it is, yeah.
There was an instance when you were working at the large organisation when you had to travel interstate for work?
Yes.
And you don't find airline travel particularly comfortable, do you?
No, airline travel is probably one of the worst experiences that I come across regularly because they, airports and airlines, which, as they tell you, are separate things, do a very bad job of managing how to look after the my electric wheelchair and also how to make sure that I am comfortable getting on and off the plane. So, yes, airport airline travel is very difficult.
And an inability to freely travel either, you know, within Queensland or interstate further limits your employment options, doesn't it?
Yes.
When you travelled interstate for the large organisation, did your employer ask you if there was any accommodations that they could make or any way they could assist you with the airline travel?
There was no formal process that I can recall that they had in place, and no one asked me about the kind of supports that I would need to undertake the travel. No.
And so what did you do?
I actually ended up asking my mother to travel with me because I, generally, I don't travel on the plane on my own because of the difficulties. So she needed to travel for work as well, so we designed it that we could travel at the same time.
So again, it was up to you to problem solve something for your work?
Yes.
While you're away on that particular work trip, you attended a work site with your colleagues, didn't you?
Yes.
And again, your employer had not asked you if there was any way that they could assist you in travelling to the work site, had they?
No.
So in that instance, it was up to you to book the maxi taxi?
Yes.
That took you and your work colleagues to the work site?
Yes.
And when you finished your visit, you'd called a maxi taxi to come and collect you and your colleagues, hadn't you?
Yes.
And what happened when the maxi taxi, as so often happens, didn't arrive?
Well, my colleagues needed to get back to the airport to catch their flight. And when the maxi taxi didn't arrive promptly, a decision was made that we would separate so that they wouldn't miss their flight. So I continued to wait at the at the work site until the taxi arrived, which it didn't. So I ended up calling my mother, who was in the same location, in the same city, who came and met me there so that we could travel alone because it was raining and getting dark and wheelchairs, electric wheelchairs and rain are not friends, so, yeah.
So just so that I'm clear, you have travelled for work, you've attended a work site for a work meeting, you've travelled with work colleagues, they have left you at the work site, albeit to catch a flight, and you are remaining at the work site in the dark or as it gets dark as a person in an electric wheelchair in the rain?
Yes.
And it's up to you to call your mother, who happens to have been there because you brought her interstate with you?
Yes.
You now work for a large department?
Yes.
And how did you get that job?
I've worked in a number of different roles there, but I originally came to be employed at the department through a friend telling me about a vacancy and me doing, from memory, a fairly informal interview to get that short-term position.
When you first started at the department, you encountered a number of physical barriers, didn't you?
Yes.
Can you explain some of those for me?
Yes, so even though the department was more well-equipped than my previous organisation in that there were some, you know, thought given to me coming, the building itself was still not well-equipped for having people with disability work there. I was on a floor with no disabled access bathroom, I, which was, it's a large building, so it was common that there wasn't a disabled access bathroom on every level. Also, I was unable to use the kitchen facilities, so the the water tap or the sink or anything like that.
Let me just stop you there. So you've mentioned that there was no disabled bathroom?
Yes.
So you had to travel to a different floor within the building?
Yes.
To use the bathroom?
Yes.
And when you travelled to that bathroom, was the one that you then used accessible?
That one was accessible. I mean, accessible bathrooms are often not great in terms of, you know, things not being in the right place. But that one was accessible, but I had to, I I think it was about six levels that I travelled in the lift to access that bathroom.
And that took time out of your workday?
Yes.
When you're there trying to do your job?
Yes.
And you mentioned that you couldn't access, you couldn't access the kitchen?
Yes.
How did that impact on your day?
I guess it just required me to have a lot more organisation for myself in my day. So rather than having a water bottle I kept at work and filling up at the tap like everybody else, I would bring water from home so that I wouldn't run out during the day. And I couldn't rely on being able to heat up my lunch. So usually I would eat something that didn't require heating or that I would go out and get something for lunch. And I could never wash up any dishes after myself, so I'd have to take them home and do that at home.
So all those little things that every other employee takes for granted required significant pre-planning on your part and adaptation?
Yes.
So something as simple as everyone else gets to bring a lunch from home and heat it up and wash their dishes out, you either eat something that can't be heated or you have to go out and buy something elsewhere?
Yes.
So again, because of the failure of an employer to effectively, you know, think of these things in advance, you are modifying your behaviour and impacting on your productivity?
Yes.
Because every time you go to use the disabled bathroom on the sixth floor or you go out to buy lunch when you otherwise would have heated it up at work, you're losing work time?
Yes.
And you take your job really seriously, don't you?
Yes.
And you want to be as productive and successful as anybody else?
Yes.
You've since changed roles, haven't you?
Yes.
And there've been some changes to your working environment?
Yes.
What changes have been made?
So on the floor I work on now, they changed a meeting room into a disabled access bathroom. And they also made some modifications to the kitchen so that I could fill up, have access to a water filter, tap, sorry, and also they put, purchased a microwave that could sit near me at a lower level so that I could fill, I could heat up my lunch.
And would you say that those, how how do you feel about the need that those changes had to be made after you started?
Yeah, I think it's a shame that they're not already in place. But at the same time, I feel very lucky to have supportive colleagues that, because I didn't ask for any of those things. It was my senior colleagues who saw that I needed that, those changes to be made and advocated on my behalf for those things to happen, which I feel very grateful for. But my concern is that not everybody has great colleagues like I do and that people will miss out on those things if they're not willing to add, or not not just willing, but if their advocacy for themselves either isn't within their capability or isn't effective, they won't be able to have those changes made so that they can then function in the workplace in line with everybody else.
You would agree, wouldn't you, that by employing you and by at some point in time turning their minds to the requirements of what might make your workday easier, your employer has now made themselves more open, potentially, to employing other people with disabilities?
Yes.
So you would say that one of the best ways to institute meaningful change might be to actually start employing people with disabilities?
Yes.
Because if you don't, you never have the experience of interacting with someone such as yourself, seeing the positive impacts that you bring to the workplace and considering how simple it might be to put a microwave on your desk?
Yes, and I think it's that common thing which I'm sure most people with a disability find that when you start interacting with people who've never interacted with anyone with a disability before, they become a lot more aware of the challenges that you face and the things that you need to help you get by. And they say things like, oh, I never even thought about that, or I I never noticed all these stairs into this restaurant before I tried to come here with you, those kind of things. So I think you're right, in a workplace, having visibility of people with a disability and that really helps to create that change.
The department that you work for recently implemented a workplace strategy that aims to increase opportunity and support for employees with disability. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
Have you yourself witnessed any tangible changes in your workplace since the strategy was developed?
I think that there's a lot more discussion around creating, creating inclusive workplaces. There's more visibility around what that means, that so there's more promotion and discussion. And I know that there's opportunities for people to attend, like, professional development sessions to understand what that means. Personally, I haven't seen any tangible changes. The tangible changes that I've seen in my workplace, as I said, have really come about because of my my senior colleagues advocating for change and those things being put in place. I hope that it comes with time because, as we know, these things, it takes time for for their shift. But at the moment, I I don't see the tangible on-the-ground changes.
You yourself have made some practical changes within your workplace, other than the ones we've just discussed, that arguably have a positive impact for other people with disabilities, haven't you?
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned before, I've only recently started to have the confidence to advocate for myself and other people with disability. And it, when I thought about attending meetings, because often I have to attend meetings in other buildings and that often makes me quite stressed because before I go to the meeting, I need to think about where it is, how I'm going to get there, what the room's going to be like, whether there's going to be a disabled access bathroom. What the room's gonna be like, whether there's gonna be a disabled access bathroom, um. And so my thinking back on my own experience made me realise that even though I know that someone coming um, to my building would be able to access the floor because there's lifts and that there would be wide enough doorways, that we don't make that known when we set up a meeting. So I, again, my senior colleagues are very supportive, so I suggested that we added on to um, our meeting invites. That information about the access to meetings and inviting people who have any um, additional not just physical but auditory or visual um, requirements to let the meeting organiser know in advance. So that they, they can, we can cater for their needs. And I think that makes a big difference, not only because people can feel comfortable, okay, if I'm in a wheelchair, I know I can access the floor. But it also makes people feel like they're being considered prior to the meeting started and that they will be welcome at that meeting.
You just mentioned the word stress. I think you said the stress in terms of, you know, wondering whether or not I can get to where I need to go to. Um, as a person with a disability, you would experience on a, almost a daily basis. Particularly, I mean, anywhere from airline travel, which is a person with a disability, you would find to be one of the most stressful things you could do.
Yes.
True to daily, can I access that building? It, it creates stress, doesn't it?
Yes.
And that level of stress that you experience also impacts in some way on your productivity as an employee.
Yes.
Because your mind at times is not focused entirely on the job, it's focused on, am I gonna be able to get to do the job?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, I find that's something, I try very hard not to let it go on top of me, but that you constantly battle with because every day when you leave the house, you're confronted with obstacles. So in order to make sure that those obstacles don't impede your ability to get done what you need to. You have to be problem solving all the time. So I think it is a hard balance between making sure that my mind is problem solving so that I'll get things done. But not letting that take over, so that, like you said, so it doesn't impact on my productivity. Which I think that people don't understand often, um, the tax the taxing nature of that process being a continuous thing.
And ultimately, um, while you yourself are um, good at overcoming those barriers, it, it still is taxing on you. But as you mentioned, there are other people with disabilities who might not be able to overcome those barriers the same way.
Yes.
And so it's really up to all of us as a community to facilitate, this hearing is obviously particularly focused on employment. But so many aspects of our community and the way we interact impacts on our employment.
Yes.
So it's up to all of us to start thinking, not leaving it to people like Dr Beth McInally. To be constantly thinking about how she might be able to get to do her job.
I think you're exactly right and I'm cognizant of the fact that I'm ve- very lucky to be extremely verbally competent. And without that, I can't imagine how difficult it would be to overcome the challenges constantly if you, if you need that, if you need assistance.
Beth, um, you had some hesitation in relation to giving your evidence to the Royal Commission today, didn't you?
Yes.
Do you mind if I ask you, um, why you had this hesitation?
I think, um, like I touched on, I spent a lot of time in my life trying to downplay my disability. I wasn't comfortable with um, identifying myself or seeing myself as someone who was disabled as part of their overall person, even though obviously I am. Um, it took me a long time to feel comfortable enough to be able to assert um, what I needed and to identify the challenges that I was facing. Because I feared that in order to appear competent and independent, I needed to pretend that those things weren't an issue. So when I started working with um, you and your colleagues around this, I was quite hesitant to um, appear publicly for fear that people would think I was less competent or less independent after speaking out. Or that I was complaining, which is not my intention. Um, so yeah, I was, I, I was quite hesitant.
And can you tell me why you ultimately decided to come today? And I'm so very grateful that you did. Can you tell me why you ultimately decided today to come and give evidence to the Royal Commission?
I think because, um, I think that mainstreaming these challenges and making it less silent is very important. I think that also for anyone who watches these hearings, it's really important to see diverse perspectives of dis- disability and to, um, for other people with disability to see people who may look like them talking about the issues that they're facing, so that they feel less alone. Um, also, I think that, um, I think it was actually you who said to me that there's more power in speaking personally about something than just writing it down. So I hoped that, um, my, what I had to say would be more impactful if I spoke in person. Um, and, because I'm really motivated to do things that create change. So that as the generations go on, it's less difficult for people with dis- with a disability in all facets of life, but as we're talking about today, especially in the workplace.
Um, Beth, you have certainly um, had a tremendous impact today. Um, thank you so very much for coming to give your evidence. You speak so articulately and succinctly about issues that impact so many people with disabilities and ultimately impact the community in general. In terms of their interactions with people with disabilities. I'd like to thank you very much. I'd like to now, um, turn to uh, the chair and ask whether or not any of the other commissioners might have a question.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'll ask Commissioner Galbally if she has any questions. Commissioner Galbally is in Melbourne.
Um, thank you very much, um, for your statement. I'd like to ask since the strategy has been developed. Um, whether you know whether more people with disabilities have been employed. And is there an outreach programme and even a target to employ more people with disabilities?
Um, thanks for the question. Unfortunately, I don't know because I don't work in that area um, of the department that does that work. I have a feeling from some of the um, things that I've read that there might, there's definitely um, some effort being put forward to, to increase the number of people who are employed with a disability. I'm not sure whether there's a target, um, and I don't know whether it already has increased. Sorry that I don't have those answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson, do you have any questions? Commissioner Atkinson, of course, is in the same room as you are.
Yes, I do have a question, thank you. Perhaps it's more of an observation with a question at the end. You talked about the importance of people just doing it, employers just employing someone with a disability. So that all the challenges that are faced can be met. But what I wanted to ask you, and this is something from my own experience. Employing, if someone, an employer employs someone with a disability, what they also get are the advantages of having that person and the, the strength and diversity that that brings to the workplace. And do your colleagues reflect that back to you?
Yes, I'm lucky to um, have some really amazing friends in my workplace who do say things like that. I'm not good at listening to compliments, so maybe, um. But I think you're right, especially I find when it comes to problem solving. Um, as given that Simone and I were talking about, um, problem solving. And how much you have to use that every day just to get through the day. I didn't realise how much that would be useful in the workplace until I started managing a team. And often we sit together and, not to say that my team members don't come up with great ideas as well, but you know, I, I guess I'm able to think tangentially about things sometimes and see things from different perspective. And, um, I, I think that at times that can be really valuable. And, well, we know, we know that the research says that people with a disability are often more loyal to the organisation and they work harder, um, on average than other employees. So I think there are a lot of benefits, like you say, to employing people with disability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, who was with me. Um, yes, Chair, there's a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Lastly, as a result of your excellent experience, you know, in the public sector. Um, first of all, um, is there a wide knowledge in your department of the Employee Assistance Fund? Which is the kind of fund that could be accessed to supply the vehicle, for example, that you were talking about that was needed. Is there a wide understanding of the fact that there's Commonwealth government funding available to fund equipment like that?
Um, did you say E A P?
Yes.
Um, I only understand E A P as a counselling, um.
Oh, sorry, no, I mean the, um, I, I meant the Commonwealth system, the, the Commonwealth funding that's available for buying equipment and upgrading premises and so on.
I did not know about it, but I'm not to say that the people who are in that area of the department where I work might be aware, but I wasn't aware of that.
Okay. Um, the other thing I was gonna ask is, what role have you been able to play yourself in your government agency for? Um, in terms of, you know, has anybody consulted you? Are you part of, uh, um, um, it's quite common for large government departments to have um, uh, like a support group for people with disabilities that's supposed to be able to speak directly to management? Have you ever been accessed that, given your very distinguished qualifications and experience? It would seem to be obvious that you would be a candidate to be asked to do something like that. Does that happen?
There is a um, support group, I'm aware, since that um, policy that we were discussing has come out, I know that there is. I am actually not on it, but not because I wasn't invited, just because I'm not very good with work-life balance and I haven't found the time to open myself up to doing that, but I will, um, because I think it's important. But I have participated in a focus group that my, um, my department ran to get perspectives of people from, um, of employers with disability in the workplace. And so I did participate in that because I thought it was a really important opportunity to provide feedback about the, the barriers that are faced. Um, and it was really useful. There was a, there was quite a range of um, participants who took part. And, um, everyone had quite different experiences of, of what they need. For me, it was more about how I could, um, be supported for, um, progressing in my career as time goes on. Whereas for other people, it was, um, more about day-to-day, um, access to technology that they needed. So it was, it was important and I'm sure that the orga- the department used that information to inform their policy that they have now.
That's a fair comment, I must say, and I apologise for suggesting that you're, you know, we need to put yet more work on on, on the shoulders of people with disability to improve something we should have fixed already. Um, what I'd also like to ask you is, um, um, ha- have you ever attempted to be promoted in your department and how has that gone?
Yeah, so, um, where I work, you just need to apply for a higher duties position. And I, I have progressed through, um, different. So I'd started off in a, um, temporary, um, temporary job and then I got a permanent position at that level. And then since then, I've gotten, I've secured another permanent position at the level above. Yeah.
And, uh, just the final question, um. I suspect your government agency is not like many others where there are a very small number of people with disability working in it. Do you think it's got beyond the business of trying to encourage the appointment of people with disability? And you mentioned earlier the, the issue of a target. Do you think it is time for government agencies to set the pace and to actually have some targets for doing this? Because frankly, it seems to be, we've been at this for more than twenty years of trying to improve the situation and nothing has moved. Do you think the time has come to actually set some targets, make some space and start doing it?
Yes, I think targets would be really important, but I think it needs to come in tandem with also the organisations being structured in a way that enables those people to comfortably come into those roles and succeed and thrive in those roles. So it's not just about meeting a target, it's also about saying, hey, this is the workplace that we have. These are the things that we've already done. Because obviously, as we all know and is evident through this, through the Royal Commission. Disability is so diverse, um, there's no way that a workplace can be ready for every need that a, that a person might have before they come in. So I think it's about first securing those kind of global access and inclusion kind of things in terms of bathrooms and kitchen facilities and things like that. But then also saying that if we're having a target, we're also ready to respond to the individual needs of people who come in. And the onus not being on that employee to have to say, this is what I need. But someone works with them to say, okay, well, what do you need to succeed and how are we gonna make that happen?
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Dr McInally, I, uh, would like to endorse what everybody in this praise and the commissioners have said about your coming to give evidence today. Uh, you said that one of the motivating factors was the need to speak powerfully and you have spoken very powerfully and we're very grateful to you. Thank you very much. The only thing I would add, if I'm allowed to give you some advice. As you get older, I think you'll find that it becomes easier to accept compliments, particularly when you get much, much older.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Could we now adjourn until ten past eleven Brisbane time and ten past twelve Sydney time?
Yes, we'll adjourn until that time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Um, Commissioners, you, you'll see with me is, um, Professor Ron McCullum. May I say, on behalf of counsel assisting, we are delighted that Professor McCullum has joined us at the bar table. Professor McCullum has been blind from birth. When he was a child, many blind people spent their lives making baskets in sheltered workshops. But Professor McCullum's mother had some other ideas for her son. His mother's confidence was well placed. Professor McCullum is the leading labour and employment law scholar in Australia. He has had an eminent academic career, including a role as the Dean of Sydney University Law School. He is the first totally blind person to be appointed to a deanship of a law school in Australia or New Zealand. Professor McCullum was the inaugural president of the Australian Labour Law Association. He has served as the Asian Regional Vice President of the International Society of Labour and Social Security Law. In early two thousand and three, the Australian Government awarded Professor McCullum a centenary medal for his role as a labour law scholar and for his role as a disabled citizen. On three November two thousand and eight, Professor McCullum was elected as one of twelve persons to serve on the inaugural Committee of Experts established under the then new Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. At its inaugural meeting in February two thousand and nine, Professor McCullum was made the General Rapporteur for the committee. That's indeed an onerous job. And at its second meeting in October two thousand and nine, Professor McCullum was unanimously elected the Chair of the United Nations Committee on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And he served on that committee until two thousand and fourteen. In early, uh, July twenty ten, Professor McCullum was appointed by the Governor of New South Wales to the position of Chair of the Disabilities Council of New South Wales. In January twenty eleven, Pres- Professor McCullum was awarded the honour of being the Senior Australian of the Year for twenty eleven. That award being conferred by the then Prime Minister, the Honourable Julia Gillard. Later that year, Professor McCullum was appointed by the Minister for Workplace Relations to review Australia's Fair Work Act. That is the, uh, key piece of labour and employment law legislation that operates in Australia. And Professor McCullum, with the other authors prepared towards more productive and equitable workplaces, an evaluation of the fair work legislation. That report was published in June twenty twelve. In twenty thirteen, Professor McCullum was appointed to the Administrative Appeals Tribunal specifically to hear appeals arising in relation to N D I S matters. I've barely touched the surface of Professor McCullum's most eminent and distinguished career. And he also does a very good TED Talk. Professor McCullum is a special advisor to this Royal Commission. Now, that makes it an impediment to me calling him as a witness, either as an expert witness or a person with lived experience, particularly. not only practising in the field of employment, but also his own employment. But we are indebted to Professor McCullum for his advice, his wisdom, generally, but specifically for the preparation of this public hearing. And I'm absolutely delighted to be able to appear with Professor McCullum, as are my colleagues in Brisbane. Thank you very much, Professor McCullum.
Thank you. And may I add to that, on behalf of all Commissioners, that it has been a great privilege and pleasure to work with Professor McCullum, whose contributions to this Royal Commission have been inestimable. We, Professor McCullum and I, share something, namely that we have both been Deans at law schools. But in Professor McCullum's case, he was the Dean of the second best law school in Australia. Yes, Miss Eastman.
Commissioners, our next witness has a pseudonym and her name is Taylor. And she is joining us to give some evidence. Taylor has decided that she'd like to read parts of her statement. And I'll invite Taylor to do that in a moment. But occasionally I might jump in and ask a few questions as we go along. So Taylor, I can see you on the screen. I think the first thing is to take your oath or affirmation.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Taylor, for joining us today and for giving evidence. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions. Yeah, but who's, oh, if you'd be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you very much.
Okay. I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes.
Thank you, Taylor. Now, Miss Eastman will ask you some questions.
Taylor, you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the 22nd of November this year.
Yes.
And you've had a chance to read the statement.
I have.
And what you say in the statement is true.
That's right.
Commissioners, can I ask you to receive Taylor's evidence into, sorry, statement into evidence? And that will be marked Exhibit 9.9.
9.9, thank you. Yes, that will be done.
Now, Taylor, we had a discussion the other day and you decided that you're going to read part of your statement. So can I invite you to start reading perhaps from paragraph three?
Sure. Okay. So I've spent most of my career in the Australian Public Service, in the, or known as the APS. And I've worked in several agencies. And I've been with my current employer for about seven years. A few years ago, I was diagnosed with autism. And looking back, I think this explains the previous difficulties I've had in undertaking certain aspects of my work. And problems I've had with social interactions. And challenges I've had transitioning from school to adulthood. So I think having to perform my role without knowing why I was struggling and not having any, the necessary adjustments which would have assisted me, came at a cost to my mental health. And I often, I've often felt that I was working below my capacity and I haven't made a great deal of progress in my career. So I've applied for two jobs in the APS, in which I have disclosed my disability and I asked for reasonable adjustments. Well, I should say, I've disclosed my disability status, not my specific disability. So one was partly undertaken by an external recruitment agency and the other one was undertaken within the government agency. And on both occasions, I was rated as not competitive. And in this, one of the positions was, in one, in one case, I'd applied for the same, exactly the same position a year earlier, where I didn't disclose that I had a disability and I was rated as competitive. So I've also applied for other positions in the APS where I've opted for the Recruitability Scheme. And I've progressed to interview stage and was rated as competitive. But in those, in those cases, I didn't seek reasonable adjustments. I was placed in the merit pool both times, but I wasn't offered a position. So I'd just like to talk about my experience regarding recruitment processes in the APS. And also my experience regarding supports for people with disability in the APS. So I'll just firstly talk about first, first job I applied for. So in this, for this position, I submitted a written application. Then the next step was to complete a pre, a timed, pre-recorded video interview. And this involved speaking to a camera on my own device and in my own time. And it was asynchronous, which means that recruiters would view the interview later on. So these are also called robo-interviews for obvious reasons. So in this case, I wasn't contacted by anyone before the interview to discuss my request for reasonable adjustments. And there wasn't any contact person or phone number to call on the email or receive from the generic recruitment mailbox. And due to the really short timeframe between receiving the email and the deadline for completing the interview, I had little choice but to go ahead and, and just to go ahead with the interview and do my best. So one of my requests for reasonable adjustments was for the interviewer to provide feedback and prompting on whether I had adequately answered the question. Or if further detail was required. So this wasn't, obviously not possible in an automated interview, online interview, is there isn't any, isn't any human interviewer to provide feedback. So I didn't really find that format very accessible and I don't think it would be accessible for many other people with different disabilities. And there was no option for reasonable adjustments. So I do, I do feel that this would, this format does disproportionately result in people with disability being disproportionately eliminated from the recruitment processes.
So when, when did you have that experience? Was that recent or some time ago?
Well, this happened last year.
And when you talk about having a robo-interview, what adjustments do you think could have been made to a robo-interview?
Well, I think, you know, maybe being given a bit more time to think about the question before the camera started rolling. So the question pops up on the screen. And then you have a minute or so and then you have to, the camera starts rolling and you have to start talking. And also perhaps being given a bit more time to answer the question. The other thing with these interviews is that there's no option to redo the answer if you feel like you, you stuff it up. So that's, you know, could possibly be an adjustment as well. But, you know, I feel even, you know, overall, the, this type of recruitment process isn't really that accessible for a lot of people with disability. I think they're understanding becoming a lot more popular because they're a cheap way for recruiters to weed out large numbers of candidates. But it, it doesn't seem to me that they've really considered the needs of people with disability when, who might be applying for the position.
So can I pick up now and ask you to read from paragraph 13? So you're going to tell us about the second position.
So in the other position I applied for, I just asked for a few minor reasonable adjustments when I submitted my application, my written application. So some of the things I asked for, requested were being provided with the questions a few minutes before the interview. So to think, have a chance to think about them. Some extra time to answer the questions and to have the interviewer's prompt me if they, if they thought I needed to answer the question more fully. So after, I was offered an interview for the position and then I changed my mind. I decided that I wanted to withdraw my request for reasonable adjustments because I, I didn't want to be, didn't want to risk being discriminated against. So I rang, I rang Human Resources and I said, I decided not, I didn't want them to provide these adjustments anymore. And they actually refused and they said they were obliged to provide me with these adjustments because I'd asked for them. And that they needed to make sure I had a fair chance of being offered the position. So in the end, I found the panel only provided me with some of the adjustments I asked for. I don't think they actually prompted me at any time and they didn't, they did provide me with the questions in advance, but it was quite rushed. It was only a few minutes before the interview started. So I didn't really have a lot of time to think about the questions. So, so I was rated not competitive in the interview. And this was the position, I had applied for the exact, the same position, the exact same job a year earlier. But in that, in that process, I had not identified as a person with disability. And the recruitment process was pretty much the same and except the second process, the interview was conducted by video conference because of COVID. And they actually, the, the same manager who was on the panel in the first interview was on, on the panel in the second interview as well. And I, I did feel I, I performed at least as well as I had in the earlier interview. So when I was rated not competitive in the second interview, it was really disheartening. And I have, I should mention, I have found if you want a reasonable adjustments in the interview process, it is really up to you to work out what you need and what you, and to ask for it. And I believe that the people conducting the interview might not have a really appreciation of why you might want or need those adjustments. And so I'd even think that it's unfair for you to get those adjustments. And I do get the impression that a lot of people involved in recruitment are not necessarily very disability aware. So in both of the recruitment processes, so the panel knew I had a disability. And although they didn't know my diagnosis, I assumed I had an idea of the type of disability I have based on the adjustments that are requested. So I'm aware that there is a view that people with invisible disabilities such as autism shouldn't disclose their condition if they can avoid doing so, to avoid the risk of being discriminated against. And people with invisible disabilities might not be seen as, as deserving of, as adjustments as people with physical disabilities. And, you know, asking for adjustments might be seen as faking it for an unfair advantage. So, so based on this experience, based on my own experience, I think, I do believe some managers in the APS have this view. So the reason I made the decision to disclose my disability status was, I, I thought it was important for others following me and I wanted to sort of try and pave the way. And I did feel I, I performed as well in the interviews that I was rated not competitive as in the interviews where I was successful. So I do, I do suspect that there was a correlation between me asking for reasonable adjustments and being rated as not competitive. But obviously, there's no way I can prove that or even be certain. So because of that, I don't think I would, I'm not really likely to request reasonable adjustments again in future, in an interview. So because I believe that the risks of disclosing discrimination are not worth any benefits. So it is, I do find it quite demoralising just to feel that you, you know, you're being rejected for a difference which you have no control over and which doesn't really have any impact on your ability to do the job. So, and in, in, in my experience of the second position, it was quite disheartening because I, I got a, when I got the rejection email, it said, no feedback will be offered for, for this process. So it sort of gives the impression that the recruiters don't feel like it's worthwhile giving you feedback so that, you know, you could possibly use that to improve your chances in future processes.
So can I ask you, this is, you've talked about the invisible disability and that decision whether to disclose or not disclose. And the two experiences that you've had have been, as you say, demoralising. So can I ask you this? If you decide in the future not to request a reasonable adjustment, how do you think that that might affect how you will perform in interviews? Have you thought about that?
Yes. So, look, I do find interviews challenging and I do feel like I'm a disadvantage with traditional interviews compared to, to people who don't have my disability. So just as an example, in the APS job interviews, you're always expected to use the STAR technique when answering questions. So this is where you have to tell a little story about how you handle the specific situation. Something that actually happened in the past to show to the panel how, that you have a particular skill or attribute that they're looking for. And in my case, I've got slower-than-average processing speed and anxiety. So it can be quite difficult thinking up an answer that addresses the question when put on the spot. And even if I've prepared for the interview, which I do, it is, it is very challenging and it does, trying to, it does kind of put, put the onus, put you on the, you're kind of put on the spot. And I think some people who have autism really do struggle in that situation.
It's a little bit like giving evidence to the Royal Commission and being put on the spot with a question.
It is.
That's similar situation.
But more stressful.
Having disclosed that, I'm going to ask you, what could employers do to make asking for adjustments easier during recruitment processes? And you might also say, how do we make it easier for people to give evidence in the Royal Commission if our process is answering questions and having to answer them on the spot? What should we be doing?
Well, look, I think, yeah, certainly, I think the Royal Commission is a really good model for how things could be made easier for people with disability in recruitment processes. So, so I think, as an example, so the employer could have like a disability liaison officer available to speak to candidates to discuss reasonable adjustments. So, and then, so this would be someone who's trained and has an interest and understanding of disability. And then that person could then work with the panel to make sure that the adjustments are properly implemented. And address any other queries so that the person is, is really, gets the support they need. So another idea I had was that the employer could provide like a list, a checklist of common adjustments that candidate could just choose from. And another option or, I, I do think that in general, I think that the concept of reasonable I, I do think that in general, I think that the concept of reasonable adjustments needs to be expanded a bit to include adjustments for people who have invisible disabilities such as mental health conditions. Because at the moment, I don't really think there is that. I think the concept of reasonable adjustments, in my experience, is quite narrow.
So you're going to make some further comments about APS recruitment programme. So can I take you back to your statement? And I think we would reach paragraph twenty-three. So you're going to take it up from paragraph twenty-three.
So I, I would like to say, talk a little bit about the APS as an employer of people with disability. So the representation of people with a disability in the APS is significantly worse than any of the other key diversity groups. So that includes LDBTI, Indigenous, culturally and linguistically diverse and women. The rate of APS employees who identify as having a disability is currently only three point eight percent. But people with a disability represent fourteen percent of the working age population. So I think it's really important for the APS to take some steps to increase representation of people with disability in the workforce and, and ensure that people with disability are not disadvantaged in the recruitment process. So I'd like to mention, I mentioned the Recruitability Scheme before. And this is widely applied to APS jobs advertised in the APS Gazette. So I think there is an issue with the Recruitability Scheme because although it guarantees the person with disability in interview if they meet the minimum requirements of the position, the person with disability still needs to be related as competitive at the interview. And then secondly, they need to be selected from the merit pool. So through my own experience, for many, many people with disability find traditional interviews to be a barrier for gaining employment. And as far as I know, there isn't actually any evidence that the Recruitability Scheme has had any effect in increasing representation of people with disability in the APS. So the proportion of people with disability in the APS has actually been declining over the last twenty years or so. And it's at least stagnant. So I'd like to talk about disability affirmative measures, which is an option for APS job vacancies. So with a disability affirmative measure, when it's applied to a vacancy, that means that only people with disability are eligible to apply for the job. And I think this offers a lot more promise to people with disability. And it has a lot more potential to improve representation of people with disability in the APS. But I have noticed, as I've been looking for jobs over the last two years, it's very unusual for APS positions to be advertised using the disability affirmative measure. There is an equivalent Indigenous affirmative measure which is widely utilised. I haven't actually seen any jobs with my current employer advertising using the disability affirmative measure. So I'd also like to talk a bit about the merit pool. So when you apply for a job in the APS now, if, if you sit the interview and you're rated as, if you're rated as comparative, you're not necessarily offered a job. Instead, you're placed in the merit pool. And the merit pools are very popular in the APS. So when I was rated as competitive and placed in the merit pool on two occasions, I noticed several of my colleagues who are also in the merit pool offered promotions where I wasn't offered a promotion. And I hadn't, didn't really have any way of knowing why I hadn't been selected from the merit pool. And, you know, obviously because I'd already been assessed as competitive, there was no feedback available. And I find that the process of selecting people from the merit pool is quite opaque and mysterious. And I do get the feeling that people with disability like myself, who might be neurodivergent, they might not be as good as promoting themselves or net, or networking as other people are and as a result might be less likely to be selected from the, from the merit pool. And I, I feel that there is a risk that the merit pool system could result in people with disability being disadvantaged in the recruitment process.
So what, what do you think would assist neurodivergent people in these situations? Where you go through a process, you're in a merit pool. I think, as you said in your statement, you're not blowing your own horn to promote yourself. What would assist neurodivergent people in such situations?
Well, I think the disability affirmative measure is a good option because it narrows the, the field, I guess. And if you use your disability affirmative measure, then you can, then they can use that process to create a separate merit pool which is only contains people with disability. And I know this is the approach that's been taken with the Indigenous affirmative measure in the APS and it has resulted in increased Indigenous representation. So with the merit pool system, I think, I think it's, it's a really complicated issue because I think a lot of people who have invisible disability experience stigma and discrimination in the workplace. And that might be why they are less likely to be selected from a merit pool. And I think that employers need to address this. And obviously, it's not something that, for which there's a really quick fix. But there needs to be a lot of greater awareness and understanding of invisible disabilities so that people who do have these disabilities can feel safe about disclosing. And, and therefore this will help them be their best when they come to work.
So you're now going to talk about workplace adjustments. So come back to paragraph thirty-one and you'll take up from paragraph thirty-one. And then I think you're also going to address support for employees with disabilities. So let's start at paragraph thirty-one.
So, so my current employer has a workplace adjustment passport. This is a document on the employee HR system. So you just complete the passport with your reasonable adjustments and you submit it to your manager and for it to be approved. And the idea is that you have control of your passport and when you move from one position to another, it moves with you. So it's a technological, technological solution, which is really good. But the, the critical part of reasonable adjustments is that a person with a disability needs to have that human support from their direct line manager to implement those adjustments. Without that, the, the workplace adjustment passport isn't really going to be of any use. You really need to have a manager who is supportive. And, and that's the key. So with my experience, I requested workplace adjustments. It was sort of left up to me to, to take control of the process. And I had to negotiate adjustments with my manager and to try and educate my manager about my disability. And I had, and I contacted the, the specialist area in human resources to, to have the workplace adjustments implemented. And I did find it a bit tricky, like engaging with, with the human resources area because there wasn't actually any name or contact number of a person to speak to. I just had to send an email to a generic email address and then ask someone to contact me. So I didn't find it really that, the process that accessible, I guess. But once I did get in touch, did get someone to contact me, it was fine. But, but it did, it did seem a bit, the actual process of requesting adjustments seemed to be a bit, there were a few barriers there. So, so in my case, the adjustments that are requested included flexible work arrangements, flexible working location, a quiet desk location, the ability to take short breaks throughout the work day, a mentor to provide guidance and feedback and clear expectations from my manager provided by regular catch-ups. So the impression I got from human resource, when I spoke to the person in human resources is that their concept of disability sort of limited to physical or sensory impairments. And I sort of felt a bit of anxiety about being seen to be difficult or demanding by asking for something that was out of the ordinary. I wasn't sure if my disability was a valid reason for requesting adjustments. When I did speak to the person from human resources, she said normally she, it was quite unusual for her to have someone requesting the type of adjustments I requested. And normally she just dealt with things like assistive technology, for example. Now with, obviously with, in the last year with COVID, everything is, the workplace has changed a great deal and people have been working from home for very long periods. And now people are starting to return to the office. And I understand that some people in my, my organisation with disability who wanted to continue working from home because some of the time, because they found it, it worked a lot better for them. And in, with my employer, they've put an arbitrary cap of forty percent of regular hours that can be worked from home. And some employers with disability have said that they wanted to work more than forty percent of their hours at home, but they were met with a brick wall. And there seems to be a lack of understanding that working from home can actually be a reasonable adjustment that can help people with a disability do their job, job as well as they can. So I'll just quickly talk about support for employers with disability in general. So as an employee with a disability, I have observed this, the, your experience is heavily dependent on the goodwill of your direct line manager. And this is very extremely variable. And it's really the luck of the draw whether or not you have an understanding manager. And if you have a manager who's supportive of your needs, you're much more likely to progress in your career and, and have a good experience overall. So I'm involved, at work, I'm involved in the Disability Employee Network. This is a voluntary network. So it's sort of in addition to your regular job. I've found that the network has been going for a long time, but it's not particularly active or, and a lot of people aren't even aware that it exists. And I found it a bit disheartening being in the network because it doesn't seem to get a lot of support from, from, from the human resources. And, and there isn't really any engagement with staff at a senior level of the organisation who might be able to provide some visibility or visibility or support. So with my employer, the, the APS agencies have senior executives who are nominated to be disability champions, is the word. So disability champions are members of the Senior Executive Service. And their role is to champion the rights of employees with disability, to promote them and to increase the visibility of employment of people with disabilities. So the disability champions haven't been involved in the employee disability network at all since I've been a member of the network, which is quite unfortunate. So I've noticed that there are, there are other diversity champions for the other diversity groups who seem to be a lot more active and involved than the disability champions. So it does seem, it seems, the impression I get is that disability is the poor cousin of the other diversity groups. And just finally, I just wanted to mention, my employer does, produces videos and articles about employees with disability for internal use to mark events such as International Day of People with a Disability. And these tend to feature employees with a physical disability. And I'd just like to make the point, if the only stories that are told are those of people with visible disabilities, it does have the effect of marginalising those people with invisible disability who are actually the majority of people who have a disability. Thank you.
Before you go, I've got one question. Can you give any advice to the Royal Commission about what do you think employers could do to include people with invisible disability?
Look, I think there's probably a lot they could do. I think, I think really it's sort of comes down to attitude that they need to, employers need to have a bit of, I think employees need to develop a more of a contemporary attitude to disability which includes people with both visible and invisible disabilities. And of course, some people have both. And, you know, I think this needs, this concept of disability needs to be brought up to, brought up to date. And it should be reflected in, in policies and procedures in, in everything that the organisation does that relates to disability. So I have thought about, I have got a few suggestions. Don't mind me going through them. So I think employers should also consult with their employees with disability and involve them when they're developing these plans and strategies instead of taking this sort of top-down approach. I think they need to address stigma and discrimination towards staff with disability instead of, and not pretend that it doesn't happen. So like, as an example, like, you know, someone being pushed out of a team even though there's nothing wrong with their work performance just because they don't fit in. So, and there needs to be options for staff who feel like they're experiencing disability discrimination to be able to report that and get help for that. I think there needs to be tailored support to employers with disability to progress their careers. So for example, leadership development programmes or tailored mentoring programmes. I think, yeah, tailored support, I think, is, would be really beneficial. As I said, I think the reasonable adjustment should, the concept should expand to include adjustments for people with invisible disabilities and mental health conditions. I think disability, employee, employee disability networks are very, can be really, really beneficial and really good. But they do need to be supported by the, properly supported and resourced by the employer to make, and make it easy for people with disability to participate. That shouldn't be just another task, you know, something, another challenge that they have to, something they have to fight for. And finally, I think it's really important that senior staff should publicly promote staff with invisible disability or, and promote invisible disability and also be accountable for promoting inclusion because they set the example that others in the organisation will follow.
Taylor, thank you very much for giving evidence and sharing your experiences with the Royal Commission and also assisting us at the Royal Commission to do a better job in the way in which we take evidence from people who are neurodiverse. So thank you very much for your evidence today.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just ask the commissioners if they have any questions for you, Taylor. First, Commissioner Galbally.
Thank you very much for your evidence, Taylor. I'd like to ask whether you have any thoughts about, you said that you felt disability was the poor cousin of other diversity groups. That's a very striking statement. So, you know, you have any thoughts about how disabilities got into the, or it's always been in this position, I gather, is what you mean? It's just not acceptable. Is that, that's sort of what you mean, that it's not?
Well, I just think it's, I'm just going to, sorry, stay with me a moment. I just feel that from the point of view of the senior staff, it's not really given, seemed to be a priority. And I think that's reflected in the statistics which show that the representation of people with disability in the APS is, is the worst out of any of the diversity groups.
Yes.
And I think it's, maybe it's just, I don't know why that is, but perhaps it's just seen as a difficult, or a big task to include people with a disability. Because, you know, obviously we're such a diverse group and have needs that, you know, that, to be able to participate in a workforce that other diversity groups might not have.
And were you sort of suggesting that it would be good, you talked about accountability of management for this area? And I wondered if you were suggesting that it should be part of performance assessment for line managers and up the line, how people with disabilities and other diversity groups, but people with disabilities are treated? Recruitment, retention, all of those issues?
Well, I'm not sure if, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting it should be specifically in performance assessment. I guess more from the, I was more thinking about how, you know, organisations have disability inclusion plans and they're required to have these, in the APS, they're required to have these plans. But it doesn't seem to me that there's any kind of monitoring or assessment to make sure that these plans are actually implemented, implemented and that the, the spirit of the intention behind the plan is actually honoured.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson.
No, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Ryan?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just thanks to the witness for a dozen excellent suggestions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Taylor, for your statement and for giving evidence. We know it's not particularly easy to give evidence in a public forum like this and we very much appreciate your having done so. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, the next witness will be taken by Ms. Zerner in Brisbane. And so I'll now pass over to the Brisbane Hearing Room.
Yes, Ms. Zerner.
Thank you, Chair. The next witness is Dominic Golding.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Golding is appearing by video link.
We'll wait for Mr. Golding to come up on the screen. I think Mr., no. Twenty-two. We've had various fleeting figures on the screen, but they seem to have fled. There's Mr. Golding. Good afternoon, Mr. Golding. Thank you very much for coming to the Commission to give evidence. If you would be kind enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Golding. Now, Ms. Zerner will ask you some questions. You're probably aware of all of this, but Ms. Zerner is in our Brisbane Hearing Room together with Commissioner Atkinson. Commissioner Galbally is in Melbourne. Commissioner Ryan is with me in our Sydney Hearing Room. So I'll ask now Ms. Zerner to ask you some questions.
Mr. Golding, can you tell the Commission your full name?
My name is Dominic Hong Tuk Golding.
And are you happy for me to refer to you as Mr. Golding today?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Golding, it's correct, isn't it, that you've provided a statement to the Commission?
Yes.
And you've had the chance to read that recently?
Yes.
And you'd like to make an amendment, wouldn't you, to paragraph six of your statement, where it reads, since in or around 2015, that should actually read since in or around 2019. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And taking that amendment into account, are there any changes, other changes that need to occur to your statement?
No, but there will be clarifications as per the discussion this morning regarding the data.
Thank you. Given that, is the contents of your statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Just an administrative task, Mr. Golding, I would ask that the commissioners would please find a copy of Mr. Golding's statement in tender bundle part A at tab twenty-three point one. And I ask that the statement be tended into evidence and that it be marked as it exhibits nine point ten.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Golding, you are currently the Policy and Project Officer at the National Ethnic Disability Alliance, commonly referred to as NIDA, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have an Advanced Diploma in Community Development and a Master of Social Work and a Master's Research into inter-country adoption in Australia, particularly those who are from Vietnam and Korea.
Yes, ma'am.
And from your experience over the last seventeen years, you've worked in the disability sector, that's right?
Yes, so I did, back in two thousand, I moved to Futskei, which is the west, in a west Melbourne, and started working with the Vietnamese community and the refugee communities there on various different community projects.
Okay. And since that time, you've had other experiences. But it's the case, isn't it, that you come to us with quite a unique experience in the sense that you wear three hats, if I can call it that? So you have the lived experience hat, that's right?
Yes.
You have a policy hat, so in relation to your current role. And then with the work you've done with refugees and asylum seekers, you have the advocacy hat, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
I thought it would be helpful for the commissioners today if we went through those three particular aspects of what you can provide and share with the Royal Commission. And I thought we'd start with your own personal experience. Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am. It's always good to start there because it gives context about why I led into doing what I'm doing. So, thank you.
Absolutely. So you are a Vietnamese man and you live with two disabilities. You have cerebral palsy and you also have a hearing impairment, that's right?
Yes, yes.
And you immigrated to Australia as a baby and you worked, or sorry, you lived out in Mount Gambier?
Yes. So I grew up in, on a farm in Mount Gambier from the age of four, and that was probably when I diagnosed with a hearing impairment. And of course, later on developmental around cerebral palsy, as I wasn't reaching certain milestones in child development. I also come from Vietnam, so I'm from an orphan. And there's, there's a relationship there with conflict in disability regarding my, my hearing impairment. So there's belief that my hearing was a direct result of bombing in, where I was found in Saigon, Vietnam.
So you came from Vietnam and you ended up in Mount Gambier on a farm? And as I understand, you went through school. But when you went to leave school, you were concerned about what your future was going to be like. And you said in your statement that if I'd stayed in Mount Gambier, I may have ended up in an ADE, and we've heard about ADEs yesterday in evidence. Can you just explain why you thought that, growing up and living in Mount Gambier?
Well, growing up in Mount Gambier, there wasn't much references where people with disabilities had anything other than an ADE or what was then known at the time as a sheltered workshop. There was only one place in Mount Gambier for people with disabilities to get some form of post-high school work. One other avenue, which was really just, whatever a person with disabilities could get channelled into. I wanted specifically to have a choice and be empowered over my future direction. So I moved from Mount Gambier to Adelaide to do some, take up some training opportunities there. Yes.
And moving to Adelaide and taking up those training opportunities, I'm interested to explore what happened once you did your training opportunities and then went to employment. But before I do that, you say in paragraph eleven of your statement, I don't need to take you there. I can just, we can talk about that. But you say that you don't think that your Vietnamese culture had an impact on you from employment perspective, but you say, I think my working class background did. Can you just explain a little bit about that, please?
Yes, I think in some ways, having a background which is more rural, working class means that certain opportunities weren't necessarily available to me if I had grown up in a relatively middle, upper-middle-class urban situation where parents and families would have had more opportunity to seek out choices and be able to also seek out better supports. Mount Gambier particularly, being on a farm, very relatively remote, very little access to certain things. So as an example, that I wouldn't have, I do not know how to do osland, even though I'm hearing impaired, because there's no opportunity to learn that. Secondly, it took six hours drive to the nearest audiologist for me. So again, if you're in an urban city situation, you had means to your, you can access those sort of things. So in terms of employment, most people within that, even within a township such as Mount Gambier, and you had a family that got relatively middle-class background, you can generally that carry on through into working for the family business. So obviously, I didn't really have that, that kind of opportunity.
So was it the informal networks or those social networks that you felt that you didn't have to help you to get those opportunities?
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
And you say in paragraph eleven that if I had to live my life again, I would not have gone on to the DSP, the Disability Support Pension, and I would not have been forced into the DES system. I want to explore that a little bit with you if I can. So we heard in evidence yesterday a little bit about the complexities of the DSP and the DES system. Can you tell us when you first went on to the DSP and the process that was involved in that?
Well, I was really seventeen, eighteen when I put on to the DSP as an alternative welfare support payment system for myself. It's very, it was useful in terms of my study, it was an income for my study when I was in Adelaide. But in terms of employment prospects, you're very restricted. So DSP pension is like a label, it's like, a bit like a class form of discrimination label. So as opposed to some people who, who are seen, who have a disability and entered straight into the workforce, that label of disabled pensioner isn't really there. And they've also stated that they've managed to have a career that's because it was a work-oriented drive for them as opposed to, I don't want to be restricted and labelled with DSP. And of course, with DSP comes the, if you want to get work or you're being classified to be able to get work, then that moves you on to the Job Network or the DES Programme, Disability Employment Services.
You said that the DSP was very helpful when you were doing your studies. And you also said when you finished your tertiary studies, and I think you say, I had to be placed with a DES provider once you finished your study. Why did you have to be placed with a DES provider?
Because it was assessed by Centrelink that I had the capacity to work. And then I would, and also partly I wanted to get work in the qualifications that I had, which is social work and community work, to move off the disability support pension. And so it's within that you have to sign a contract and a mutual obligation and that carries on forward from there.
And with that job capacity assessment that you had, do you remember now or recall now what hours you were assessed to be able to work or that you had the capacity to be able to work?
No, there wasn't a particular number that I could remember. I do apologise, but it was a while ago. But it was just that I was, I can just, into the open employment market, even though my disability was considered severe. So I'm in a funny, I'm funny in that sense of my disability and capacity, so.
When you say I'm funny, what do you mean in the sense that you have a disability, but you're also being assessed as having capacity even though you've got a significant disability? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. So my combined disability is considered severe enough for the disability pension and so forth. And, but my study had proven and, and my previous work that I've done has proven that I can work.
All right. And so, once you've got that assessment, you said you had to sign a contract and you talked about mutual obligation. And you also talked later about in your statement of having to present to a DES to meet that contractual obligation. So can you just explain what happened there? I think you said you, with two DES providers through two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen, can you just give us a brief summary of your experiences with those DES providers and your, and your requirements to attend other DES providers?
So as it works for me was that I would get a letter or a statement or email saying that I'm required to turn up for interviews. They would say, well, if you do not turn up to the interviews or this disability support pension will be, could potentially be cut. That's one aspect of it. The other aspect was that I had to enter into an agreement every year with the DES, with the two DES providers. And that was to, just basically an agreement about what I would do or what the employment service provider would do. It's generally that I would go out looking for work and I would also look into stuff and also educate, supposedly educate the potential employer what reasonable adjustments could be made. That's generally what the agreement was.
I'll just pause you there for a moment. So in regards to the obligations that you had there, you said that your goal was to get off the DSP, that was right, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And you just finished some tertiary studies in regards to community service, et cetera, that's right? And you just finished some tertiary studies, um, in regards to community service, et cetera. That's right?
Yes.
And you were really wanting a job in that particular area of work and you were wanting that help from the D E S provider to find that employment?
Yes, yes. Um, I was looking for work that was, um, um, relatively permanent, um, wasn't infrequent. Uh, and it was to, um, match to the, to the, um, both community development and social work back, background that I have the training of. And, but the D E S providers, both of those D E S providers were kind of scratching their heads about, they couldn't really find me employment or placement in, in that, in that sector.
Mm-hmm. And it's a trace.
Mr. Golding, uh, I wonder if, don't mind if I could just ask a question so I could get the chronology right. I see that you have two master's degrees, one in social work and one in, uh, research into inter-country adoption. Is that right or is that part of the same master?
No, they're two different masters done over two different times.
Right. Could you tell, would, would you mind telling me when you got those master's degrees?
Uh, I graduated with a master's of social work in two thousand and fourteen and I finished the master's of, uh, research in twenty ten.
And prior to that, in order to do the masters in research, did you have other qualifications, tertiary qualifications?
Yes, I had a, um, a, a degree of, uh, in art and a diploma in the, um, performance, dramatic arts.
Right. And you had those prior to two thousand and ten?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to work out what your formal qualifications were at the time of your first interaction with the D E S.
Uh, that'd be, um, um, master of art and, um, uh, my, my master of, um, research when I first encountered D E S.
And you were reminding yourself of the dates by looking at the certificates on the wall, I assume?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Golding, just picking up from your studies, so you had those qualifications when you were with the D E S providers. And it's a case, isn't it, that in the two jobs that you were placed with, they were not related to your tertiary qualifications? That's right, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. In, in terms of, um, the, um, job roles as described, um, the first one was at a food bank with an unemployment, uh, agency, which is, uh, they had a, my job provider had a relationship with that agency. It was, um, half a day, uh, to manage the food bank, which is, you know, somewhat community. Um, but all I were doing in, in that capacity of, in terms of, um, daily activities, in terms of the work was basically to stack and shove, um, dry foods and some wet foods, some perishables, sorry, ma'am. Um.
And then you went on and you were placed in a Mexican restaurant and you, you had some struggles and challenges there. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, um, my second, um, D E S gave me a, uh, opportunity to work in a Mexican restaurant. Um, that was, um, for, uh, two evenings a, a week. Uh, and because of my cerebral palsy, um, I had, um, uh, to stand up for long periods of time. And also my cerebral palsy doesn't give me great, um, fine motor skills. So often I would, uh, uh, occupational hazard, uh, act, uh, cut myself with the wine glasses. Um, and, uh, I, I obviously had to declare that, um, uh, I, I had to leave the position because it, it was only, um, for two evenings a week. So, um, both of those positions, the pay was not, um, what one would sufficiently live on with the cutbacks with the D S P, with the wage.
And, and I want to touch on that because, um, in your, uh, you actually had the opportunity to finally find some work in your area, but you found that job yourself. And I think you referred to it as my break finally came when I was able to find some casual work. Um, and you talk about with diversity and disability in Victoria. And that was running some workshops, um, in regards to, uh, working with people with disability. And you say though, the casual work though, that I was able to obtain affected my D S P. And that due to the casual contract and the agency pay cycle, it made that you ended up owing Centrelink money according to their robo debt system. So can you just explain what happened there? So with the work, what were you earning and what happened with the D S P?
So with all those positions that I had, you had to get from the, from the food bank for, um, one, um, one day, half a day a week and two weekend. And then even with the, the short, short casuals because the, um, the community work with the, um, day support centers through diversity and disability were about three hours a week. And so of course that income, um, I had to send an invoice to them with, to get, um, uh, payment from, from them. Uh, and of course I had to be declared to Centrelink. And of course, because of that, that time lag between invoice, doing the job, um, getting paid, it, it doesn't fit well at all, if at all, with the Centrelink, um, compulsory reporting timeline. So often, um, I, I try, I couldn't report because I didn't know, A, how much I'll be getting and B, when I'll get paid. And of course, that, when I did declare on Centrelink, that of my hundred and fifty dollars for that one day, what, a week of workshops or that ha, you know, that, that hundred and fifty dollars of working in a restaurant for that, for that weekend. Um, Centrelink would say, well, we paid you too much, you owe us X amount of money. And, um, that generally would work out to be about five hundred dollars a fortnight or so forth. So, um, it, it varies of course because the, the short-term contracts were variable. And of course, that shifted how much, um, pay I would get the subsequent fortnight with Centrelink. So, um, which is another reason why I, I really wanted to get off the D S P.
And you say in your statement, you've been off the D S P for now for around five years and that was your goal and you've been able to achieve that. Um, in your current role at N E D O, you, um, have required some assistive technology and I think you're using that assistive technology today. And you say that you were able to, um, obtain that through the Commonwealth Job Access Scheme. Did you arrange those technology assistants, um, through that scheme or did your employer arrange that for you?
The employer arranged it, um, as per, um, eligibility of being a not-for-profit organization. And but I followed through with specific, um, medical and, and, uh, disability advice for, to make sure the technology matches up with, with my impairments.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Golding, the commissioners have your statement and I am conscious of the time. So I'm going to skip through a little bit of your statement and there's, um, some data that's been provided in relation to your policy work, et cetera. And that's all there for the commissioners to review. And what I wanted to do is really go to your, um, advocacy work that you've done and your work that you've done with people from the culturally and linguistically diverse, diverse community. Um, you say that people arriving to Australia, you think that they're provided mixed messages about their future opportunities. And they're told, they're not really told about the barriers to employment. So from your perspective of working, I guess with policy, but also more specifically your advocacy work, can you just explain what you mean by that?
Yes. So generally speaking, the, the government has, um, put forward that, um, there are work opportunities available for migrants, um, and refugees. Uh, they, um, there's sometimes in their visas, there, there's work, um, there's, uh, work possibilities. So what I mean by that, in their visa, they can apply for work. But other visas deny them being able to work. And that's generally for those who are on temporary visas, who are asylum seekers. Now, this, this mixture of work and creates a lot of expectations for someone that, that can just go out into the open market and, and, um, get a job. Now, of course, that means they come in contact with, um, job network. That means they also have, uh, settlement services also have some form of job network to, in, in order to get their clients into, into work. Now, the problem is that, um, uh, our, generally our social system is that you have to pass many ideas about being eligible to work. And I'm not just talking about one visa, I'm also talking about one's ability to speak English, one's perception of them, of, um, uh, understanding the, the employer. And so many of, quite a few of the people that I try to support in their work, that they encountered various degrees of discrimination. Um, yeah, so.
And, and was that, was that compounded when you've got English as being a, a barrier, but also someone with a disability? So when you combine those, your experience was that that was really creating some challenges for people?
Yes, because there's, uh, the, the, the system is built on the idea that you can work nine to five, not a problem. And you can, and, and you have a, 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 a a sufficient level of English to communicate just like we are communicating today. And of course, and, um, many employers, when they see an applicant or they see someone with a, a, a non-English speaking background, they go, oh, but how well do you speak English? Or can you do the job that I'm asking? And of course, many people with disabilities from culturally and migrant, migrant background, the disability is not always, um, visible. And although the invisible aspect of their disability as a result of their, their traumatic experience is, um, presents a lot of barriers for the employer. And also, um, it's one, not always one can disclose to job network or an employer in the fear of, um, rejection or, or, yeah.
And Mr. Golding, in your advocacy work, it's the case, isn't it, that you'd have people come to you frustrated, angry, couldn't get a job. And whilst you weren't an employer agency, you'd try and help them. So what would you do for those people to try and help them to get work?
So basically my role was to look at what avenues are available, um, what they wanted. And to actually try and get, I'll make contact with the potential employer and explain them their background, what they can do, what mechanisms they could use to support the, the potential, um, employee. And also I would ask or request that at least there can be a three-day probationary period so that they can demonstrate to the employer that they can actually do the job. And for many occasions, they actually can do the job. They just needed a bit of extra allowances and support around team communication needs.
Mm-hmm. And you were wanting those people to have the opportunity to prove themselves, weren't you?
Yes, just like I would like anybody else to, for me, to have the opportunity to prove myself.
Mm-hmm. And when you rang a number of employers, um, on behalf of people who were, um, of non-English speaking background and had a disability, and you tried to advocate on their behalf, what would be the response generally from employers?
Most of the responses were, no, 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 he, he wouldn't, uh, then I would have to, um, do X, Y and Z. And I don't have time to do that. Or, oh, that's going to cost too much money. Um, that's, uh, we can't just uh, invest in that kind of assistive technology, uh, without knowing that I could actually apply to job access for this sort of thing. Um, yes. So, and also I would say, oh, but this, um, how much, how well is this English? Um, and, and it's like, well, I can't speak to him. He doesn't know English. So there's generally no kind of, uh, responses that I got back from employers.
Is there an example you can provide in relation to, I think you had mentioned, um, about, um, someone that had communication difficulties and could text? So is there some, an example that you can provide in regards to that?
Yes, there are, uh, uh, in, in terms of tech, technology. Yes. Sorry, I didn't quite pick that up.
Sorry.
So there's a, a, a gentleman who was a recently arrived, uh, refugee. Um, he needed, um, vision, get assistive technology to be able to screen with the computer. Uh, but he also had a, needed some, uh, tech voice activated software system for him to actually understand, um, messages and, and, and text on the screen. Um, we, we approached his normal settlement worker, um, told him to approach, uh, Vision Australia, which is one of the, um, uh, that supports those who are blind. And, uh, he got rejected back because they said, well, they didn't understand him because he didn't speak English well enough to, to. So, um, I also encouraged, um, to explain to the, to the, um, the person on the other side, this is his background, this is what he needs and this is what he requires. Because for some reason, the settlement support worker couldn't vouch for him like I just basically did. But he could, himself could not self-advocate for himself because of his, um, language barrier. Um, because it, um, so, but once the worker understood that he could get support and then, um, say to the employer, I have these, these equipment assistive technologies available for me. I, I'm quite happy to seek employment. Um, so yeah, that, that's one of the, one of the cases.
In your statement, you talk about that there are a number of people that, um, come from a culturally and linguistically diverse background, um, who have a disability and were working in their prior country. They come to Australia and they're there looking for a job and because of the English barrier, um, it's, uh, and, and their qualifications, what happens to those people that were working, had some qualifications, were able to do a job? And they come to Australia in relation to the recognition of that skill and qualifications?
Yes, I think that, um, in a, uh, most migrants, um, come to Australia with a relatively high expectation that they can just go from the job that they had and move straight into the job that, that they, um, were doing in Australia within their context. But of Australian employment, there's a, there's a whole raft of requirements. Qualifications, degrees, certificates, um, police check, all these sort of things. And of course, most people from the, the, uh, from cold backgrounds, um, don't necessarily, um, have that at their fingertips, particularly if you're a refugee with a disability. Um, so they would actually have to, um, the, the main barrier is that they, well, how do I get these things? How do I demonstrate? And also because there's the requirement that they have to work, uh, in some of the, according to the visas, um, they, um, would, would go through what the settlement services and job access network would tell them that they needed certificates and so forth in order to gain employment. Now, the, the problem is that with disability is that, um, with recognition, the employers don't understand and, and settlement workers don't understand disabilities. So they, they don't know how to make the system work in favor for, for their clients most of the time. Um, that, and so they would, uh, people would feel frustrated that they can't fulfill the obligations. And they'll be rejected, they'll be parked, they would, um, uh, be told that, that, that can do a, a three-week casual hard labour job picking fruit when their body not, hasn't got the capacity to do that. That's the only job available. They will have to take it. And, and so the cycle keeps going around and around.
Okay. Can I just pause you there for a moment? So, um, what I'm taking from that is that, um, people are coming, uh, from um, experience in a different country. They come here, they've got a disability and that perhaps they're not being matched to the right job, that they're. to the right job, that they might be doing hard labour work that's not consistent with work they've been doing previously, that they might be doing courses that are inappropriate to their past experience, that's what you're saying, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
And you refer in your statement to that they get churned through jobs and are forced back into the Job Network system. That's what your experience is of seeing that. You say, and I come to just in conclusion, you mention a number of future recommendations and you say that I believe we should leverage a lot more on the abilities of people, not looking at their disability. And I think more time is needs to be taken in examining the professional background of people in terms of better placing them in positions where they can thrive and feel ownership of the workplace. And you've also said that many people come from backgrounds where violence is the norm and insecurity are a way of life, and so they're looking for that opportunity of employment. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Golding, that has gone very quickly, and there's so much content in your statement. The commissioners will have the opportunity to read your statement. So I'm going to now hand over to the commissioners just to see if they have any brief questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Golding?
I would like to ask you a question about paragraph fifty-six, where you say you consider that DES and Settlement Job Agencies do business and the profits they receive by reinforcing disadvantage and marginalisation of cold people with disability. I was going to ask you before, you know, about DES's, your inability to deal with cold, but so if you could roll those two together in an answer, that'd be great.
I'll do my best, ma'am. So essentially, DES and Job Access are for-profit business. So they get X amount of money from the government for X amount of people that they have on their books. They get X amount of money for putting people into a job. Then they get X amount of money from the government when, if they stay in a position for a certain amount of time. Now, of course, this total cycle and a lot of the contracts for asylum seekers and refugees with a disability is that they're just told to just do this job, go through the position, do the job, and then go back out again. And then, of course, when they have to sign back after Job Network provider, they get another, the job providers get another set of money. And so the circle continues. Now, one would normally go is that for someone such as myself or anyone else in the Australian community, the assumption is built in that you do this once, or at the very most, twice in your job-seeking journey, so to speak. Because the idea is to get you into a position where you can thrive in a position on a job that you feel you can have ownership and earn a decent living wage. But Job Network providers and some settlement services, it's just a way of getting people into the job market, but they earn a bit of, because of the business model, they earn a bit of funding. The problem with jobs, if, for example, I have one gentleman that was a refugee, he had a limb amputee, but he drove trucks back in his home country. He wanted, he loved to drive trucks, but no one here in the Job Network providers had looked at his disability and said, you can't drive a truck. We can't give you a job driving trucks. But that's what he wanted to do, and that's why I'm saying that people should be looking at people's abilities, not their disability. And that should make allowances for people with psycho-social disabilities or invisible disabilities, because they may be able to work in a different capacity than what we normally see at the straight-out nine-to-five job sensibility of working. Or if you do a night shift, it would be between six and six in the morning, as an example, because I used to do night shift in my disability work. So, but they look at, they see and they judge you, not only because of the way you look, the way you speak English, the way your disabilities are presented. And I think that's a barrier. And I think we've got to, like any other able-bodied Australian, we need to look at people's abilities and what they can contribute to the workforce. And of course, everyone deserves a good living wage to pay the rent, put food on the table, and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Golding. Thank you for that. I'll ask Commissioner Atkinson now, she has a question.
No, thank you, you've answered the question I was about to ask. Thank you very much, Mr. Golding.
And Commissioner Raw. Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but I am aware that Mr. Golding is a very talented person, has written a play and performed in a play called Shrimp. And one of his reviewers said that he had a way of compelling people to understand how he feels, and you've certainly done that to that. Thank you very much, Mr. Gold.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Golding, for giving your evidence. You've provided us with a perspective that actually we haven't heard a great deal of during the course of public hearings at this commission, and we're very grateful to you for doing so. So thank you very much. Shall we now adjourn?
Commissioners, if we can adjourn, perhaps we've just need to make up a little bit of time. Are you happy to return?
Resume at two thirty.
At two thirty, yes.
Resume at two thirty, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next witness is Oliver Hunter, and he lives in Aubrey, but he's made his way to Sydney, and so he joins us in the hearing room in Sydney. So the first thing we need to do for Oliver is his oath or affirmation.
Oliver, Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming all the way from Aubrey to Sydney.
No worries, it's good to be here.
To appear before the commission. If you would just follow the instructions of my associate, who is just to your right, she will administer the affirmation to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation at the end. Please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And now, Miss Eastman will ask you some questions. I think, however, I should say, I think you are the first person to give evidence in this hearing room, isn't it?
No.
Yes, there you are. You've set history for the Royal Commission.
That's good, I'm glad I'm part of history.
Well, let me confirm you are Oliver Kane Hunter.
Yep, that's me.
And you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes.
You've got a copy of the statement with you?
Yep.
And is what you said in the statement, is that true?
Yes.
Now, you are passionate about stand-up comedy, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and you have an ambition to be a comedian?
That is the plan, yeah. Hopefully, I can be a full-time comedian one day.
And what performances have you done to practise being a comedian?
So a lot of, I started stand-up when I was at university in Wollongong about five years ago, and I've done a lot of open mics in Sydney and Melbourne, and regional ones, Aubrey where I'm from, Wagga, it's another town in New South Wales where I've performed. I've also been overseas to the US and done a few open mics in New York and LA, which were very cool. So, yeah, happy to, love performing and wherever I can, and however long someone wants to put me on stage for is always a good option.
So the idea of a stand-up mic is that there's an open mic and in effect, you metaphorically put your hand up and say, I'll do a particular routine.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do four or five minutes usually, and at open mic level, it's, you know, there's a lot of other comedians that are trying to fight for stage time, so you always try and do well, as good as you can. And then, if you're lucky, you will get invited to do some more professional-style shows, which I've been lucky enough to do, and they're a bit easier to do because the crowd usually like you more when you're at a professional show. So when you're at open mic, no one really likes you, no one wants you to do well, but when you're at a professional show, they want the best for you.
And what sort of drew you to be a comedian?
I think I always loved comedy just as a viewer, and then one day I saw a sign in Wollongong for the Wollongong Comedy Club, and I thought, my mum told me I was funny, so maybe I should give it a go. And I think I never was someone, when I was younger, to go, I want to be a comedian, but once I started, I realised, oh, these might be my people and this might be my scene.
You've got the bug. Can I take you back in time a little bit? So you're twenty-five years old now, and I want to ask you a little bit about university, but can I take you back another layer?
Yep.
So where did you go to school?
So I went to school at Aubrey High, Aubrey High School, public school in Aubrey. And then before that, I was at a little country public school, Howlong Public, which was about thirty minutes outside of Aubrey. And that was my primary school, and then I caught the bus into school every day to high school for the whole time.
And what was it like going to school?
Yeah, I was lucky enough to have a really supportive family, siblings, parents, and extended family that always promoted, you know, mainstream participation and being included. And at school, that was continued, I met some great friends and had a good, a lot of good experiences at high school. There were some tough times socially, I always had good friends and I was never targeted or bullied for my disability, but there was some sort of maybe subconscious or accidental exclusion or misunderstandings from teachers and students. Most of my issues came from a couple of teachers and their lack of adaptability, if that's a word.
How did you cope with that as a kid?
I was lucky enough to have really good support from the welfare team at the school. So whenever I had an issue, I would either confront the teachers myself, and that came from the support of my family and the confidence that they gave me. But I'd also then go to the head of the welfare department and she would go and bat for me.
So many kids have, start part-time jobs when they're at school. Did you have a job when you were at school?
So I got a job at the local supermarket when I was about sixteen, which was young.
Did you have to do?
Well, yeah, one of my jobs, and this is true, one of my jobs was I had to dust the tops of the fruit tins. So, because we all know it's important to have dust-free fruit tins when you put it in the back of your cupboard for four years. So if you ever wanted a dust-free fruit tin, I was your man to do that. That was one of my jobs, and then I would just pack shelves. I worked with one of my best schoolmates, so we had a good time, we had a packing.
How did you get that job?
Through an employment agency, specialised in disability employment.
And is that at the age of sixteen, the job that you wanted to have?
No, I would have loved to have worked, and my idea at that point was to work in a sports store, you know, retail job, customer service and that sort of thing. But in the end, I was happy to just have the job and that was fine at that point.
So you think that job in the supermarket was a little bit tokenistic? Becoming an expert in dusting the dust off the top of fruit tins?
Yeah, absolutely.
You questioned whether you had a real job, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. I definitely felt there were times within that job where I think the management were just happy to have the local kid in the wheelchair rolling around the shops and it looked good for them and they felt good about themselves. But I wasn't really contributing to the business or to the productivity of the supermarket, like my friend was, for example. He was an important employee and they relied on him for a lot of, you know, the goings-on of the supermarket and the jobs, whereas I was sort of just there and did what I could.
So your friend started at the same time as you?
Yeah, roughly.
And so, did he have particular skills in dusting the dust off the top of fruit tins?
No, he was relied on for a lot more than just dusting the tops of the fruit tins. So he would pack shelves to a higher extent, and he would be on the checkout, which was something I was willing to do and happy to be trained in at the time. But at the time, that wasn't, I wasn't given the opportunity, because I thought the checkout would be a perfect role. I could sit at the checkout in, I wasn't able to have a seat, and I could do that. And I thought that would be my way to be productive and contribute, but that never happened.
Did you ask whether you could do the checkout job?
Several times.
And did you ever get rostered on at all to do anything like checkout work?
They tried, we tried once to do it, and the office chair that I was given to sit on, I couldn't manage because it was on wheels and I couldn't control with my function, control the, so then that was, they said, oh, we can't really do much more than that. And I did sort of raise that you could, as a business, apply to the government for funding to modify a checkout or modify anything that needed to be done, and that was never followed up.
So how long did you last in the supermarket job?
I did that for about fifteen months. I think I'd finished sort of towards the end of year twelve, senior high school, and I was, yeah, sort of seventeen and a half, eighteen. And, yeah, I think my friend finished up at the same time.
Okay. When you're at school, was there a sort of career counsellor or any discussions about what you might do after school?
It wasn't necessarily anything with the counsellor directly. I had a couple of good teachers that I would talk to anyways, advisors and mentors. But regardless of that, I always wanted to go to university, more to the point of I wanted to leave Aubrey and leave home and live independently. So it was always, always had the eye on leaving town and living a different life. And I was lucky enough to do a sort of taste of uni experience through my school with U O W.
When you were doing the H S E and you were thinking about uni and where you wanted to go, you also had a major operation, didn't you, in year twelve?
Yes.
Did that have an impact on you in terms of finishing your schooling?
Yes, it did. So I had two within that period, so October twenty-twelve and then February twenty-thirteen. And then in New South Wales, we start the year twelve course in the end of year eleven. So I'd missed a chunk of time at the, in October and then in February, so a week in hospital, five days in hospital, and then another week at home. So I would miss two weeks just away from school, and then I would come back but still be affected, like pain management and just being at school was difficult in those recovery weeks. So I applied to U O W for early entry, and I was lucky enough.
Perhaps just explain to the commissioners, no offence to the commissioners, but it's a while since they've been at school, what's the early entry programme?
So they based, that was a programme that they based your sort of entry scores into uni on your year eleven results. And they took in, the UN had an interview and they sort of, it was like a job, and they sort of based it on you as a person rather than your marks, because you would put in your application that you may have had a misadventure or surgery, or you've had other circumstances that might have affected your academic results, which in my case it very much did. And I was fortunate to be given that chance to get into uni early.
So you set your sights on going to Wollongong, and you moved to Wollongong in twenty-fourteen, and you started to study a Bachelor of Media and Communications. And you lived on campus?
Yes.
What was that like, without telling us all the secrets? But what was that like living on campus?
I loved it. I thought it was one of the best times of my life, being away from home for the first time and meeting all these new friends and discovering uni as an idea and an experience. And I thought I was going to be an academic student, but then after about four weeks, I realised I was going to be a social student. So I found that out pretty well, and I enjoyed the social side of uni and just dealt with the academic side when it had to be dealt with. But I loved that lifestyle, we were right near the beach, I loved the coast, a lot warmer on the coast than it was in Aubrey. So I loved the warmer weather and just, it was a nice, amazing experience to be up there.
They're not necessarily totally incompatible experiences, social and academic?
No, I had a good time in the academic side of it, some great tutors and lecturers, and a great course, and I've still got good contacts with some of the academic staff at the uni. And I enjoyed my course, I probably could have done another year just because I, to do an extra bit of study, but in the end, I... But in the end, I um was had a great time and would de- I'd definitely go back to to study and especially at Wollongong one day.
Okay, now this hearing is about employment, so I'm going to start to focus in on your experiences of finding jobs. And the applications that you've made. And when you're second year of uni, having lived on campus, you thought that you might try for a job at the university. What was the job that you wanted to take on at the university?
So the job for the for the at the uni was at actually my residence where I lived. And it was a job uh known as the, at the time, was a residential advisor position. And you would sort of act as a student leader, um which involved, you know, helping organise events for the for the student body. And um assisting students with any issues they might have as best as you could. And just sort of being a leader around around campus and giving that extra bit of responsibility.
Yeah.
And I went for the job uh in the second year because you couldn't as a first year because you were new.
Mm-hmm.
Your second year, you could you could go.
So at first, um so when you're in your second year, the first attempt at the job. Um, you put in an application fairly late, didn't you? It was a little bit rushed. So what happened in relation to that application?
So that application came up, um as you said, rather quickly. And I sort of had about a week to put together an application and and write the the cover letter and and all the things that come along with that. And I knew it was quite rushed, but I I just, I thought I'd put my hat hat in the ring for the job. And then um so that so did the best I could on the short notice. And then unfortunately wasn't uh given the position and I was told by the the manager, who I knew very well. Said, yeah, your paperwork and your application, your written application just was, it was a bit rushed and wasn't quite good enough compared to who we gave the the job to in the end.
Yeah, so it was a bit of a learning experience.
Absolutely, yeah.
But having lo- not got the job in twenty fifteen, when it came up the following year in twenty sixteen. You thought you'd give it a go again, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. And I thought, well, more prepared than I was before. And I had time to to write the application, so it it was as good as it was going to be. And I went through it with um with different support people and it was pretty sharp, so I was I was happy with it and.
Now, things didn't quite turn out the way you expected when you put your application in. Can you tell the Royal Commission what happened when you put your application in and you got a call from somebody? Take us from there.
Yeah, so I uh put the application in and as anyone would. And then the night before the interview, at about five o'clock, so close of business, everyone had gone home from the admin office. I get a call from from the head of campus and he says, oh, would you mind coming in and and just having a chat about the interview tomorrow? And and even then, like I'm at the point I was twenty years old, even then I was like, that's that's not a normal thing to to do. And I wondered, what would is everyone getting asked to do that? But again, I I still didn't have the complete uh sort of idea that um it was necessarily a bad thing. So I said, yeah, I just happen to be in my room on campus. So I said, hey, I'll be over there shortly. So I went into hi- to his office and um he told me pretty directly that. Um, due to my physical restrictions, I won't be able to to do the job as a as a residential advisor.
How did you react to that?
I was shocked. I um I didn't really have anything to say back to that. Uh, and I sort of had a moment to gather my thoughts and I I thought, well, you know, I've known the te- everyone on the team already. I've known for at least two years. Um, we can adapt the position to help help me do it. Because there was one one thing that that I couldn't do and that was access all the rooms. Because part of our job was to do rounds and just check on everyone's, knock on their door every now and then to make sure everyone, everything was all right, if we got any reports of anything. And so I knew that was gonna be an issue. I was like, well, I can't get to every room on this campus. So I thought, okay. And I said, oh, I knew this was gonna happen, but surely we can adapt the role to to um work with me and I can work with the rest of the team. I get on well with them socially. So I think professionally, we could definitely make it work. And he uh s- he wasn't sort of coming to that party with me, so.
Well, thi- this is the afternoon and the next morning you had the interview.
Yes.
So was that, did you think, oh, what's the point going to the interview or?
Yes, I did. I did uh have that moment where, because I think what threw me as well, he quite politely said at the end of our chat after. You know, pretty blatantly discriminating against me, said, uh, I'll see you at the interview tomorrow and we'll talk more tomorrow about it. So I still went in, you know, trying to pu- put on uh my nice shirt and put and said, I'll try and be as professional as possible. And the other, there were two other on the interview panel. And I thought, no, I'll give it, still give it my absolute best and and I'll try and try and convince myself that this conversation won't affect. The outcome of the interview. Um, but it definitely, it definitely sat with me the whole night. And I did did didn't interview very well, whereas the first time round, I interviewed really well because I was comfortable and confident. Whereas this time, I was still very shaken up and and I lost a lot of confidence.
Was the head of campus part of the interviewing panel?
Yes.
And did the head of campus say anything about the conversation that you'd had the day before?
No, he'd no, none of the other two on the panel knew knew of that conversation.
Did you say anything in the interview like, oh, hey, you just said to me last night I can't do the job?
No, I didn't say and that is, that's something I regretted for a few years after the the experience. That I didn't say anything to anyone in the moment of the interview. Um, and it's, I can't say what would have happened as a result of that, but that is something I uh do wish I had have done at the time.
I think you sort of say you've stewed on this incident for many years, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I've um, there was a few years after that, it was now sort of four, four years since that happened. But there was um a few years uh that I I just sort of sat with me and I stewed on it, as you said. And you start to wonder, especially when you're that age, at twenty, you're like, well, if I can't get a job at my uni, who with people that I know. And who know that I'm capable, how am I gonna go, even with my degree? How am I gonna go in the general population and general public? And that starts to eat away at your confidence and and um, yeah, so that sort of sat with me for a while.
So some people listening to this might be saying, like, you're an intelligent, well-spoken young man, got a good education. Why didn't you stand up for yourself and make a complaint to somebody or uh report the head of campus?
I think at the time, again, it comes back to, I was in a bit bit of shock for a while. I I did eventually uh go to someone at the uni in the Disability Services Department, who I who I dealt with in the past. And just not sort of anything formal, but I sort of said, this is the a conversation that happened. I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I just want to tell you and and nothing obviously come of that. But at the time, I think being young, a- as I said, twenty years old at the time, I I was just still shaken up. And and just tried to do my best to move on from it as as quickly as I could. But again, it sat with me and don't worry, I'll never forget it. I've definitely dealt with it and moved on to to other opportunities. But I'll never forget that conversation in in that office that that night.
Yeah. So when you finished uni, uh what were you thinking about in terms of the next steps in? For you, what did you want to do as a career and where did you end up?
Well, I I think I knew that I would have to, especially after the experience at the uni. I would know I'd have to somehow create my own path, so to speak. So I knew that, and I maybe it was it was uh the negative aspect of of having that experience. But part of me is like, I I can't let someone tell me no to a job that I deserve again. So I'm gonna have to try and find my own way.
Hmm.
And that's sort of where I'm at now. I'm doing a lot of consulting work and and um I'm part of a a research team. Um, with A C U in Sydney and Melbourne. And I was asked to do that due to my lived experience with a disability, similar with my role with Get Skilled Access, it's due to my lived experience.
I'll ask you about that in a moment, but you had a job, didn't you, after university? Uh, about the time you finished university, that wasn't doing the things that you're doing now. Tell us a little bit about that job.
Okay, so I first got that job as a receptionist, um just in a in an office. Um, when I, during between my summers of second and third year of uni. So November twenty fifteen to February twenty sixteen. And and my brother worked for the for the business and he sort of gave me a call October of twenty fifteen before I was coming home. Said, oh, they need a receptionist, um the C E O would like to meet with you. And so I got home, the the second day I was home, I went into o- office. And it was less of an interview or more of a, so I'm this bit of paperwork, we'll have a chat and you start Monday. So I was lucky enough to have that job as a as a receptionist and um.
What did you do as a receptionist? What were your tasks?
So I um answering the phones um and greeting people as they came into the office. Um, some data, basic data entry uh stuff. And um, yeah, mostly customer service and answering the phone and dealing with people as they came in, which I felt I was very good at and got better at. As I, so that um that sort of helped me develop those skills as well.
Uh, but you're still in the back of your mind, think that job might have been a bit tokenistic as well. Why do you say that?
I think it's partly to do with my previous employment experiences with the supermarket and then with the uni. So I think I still had that in the back of my mind. And also, there were times where I felt I was underutilised and they, because they knew of my degree that I was studying. And I would try to ask, well, if you need a hand with some marketing stuff or, you know, communication and um social media or. Um, I thought I could definitely help out. But there was part part of me at times, I felt that um. That, yeah, again, they were happy to have a I go on a wheelchair on the front desk. But again, I had a um good, many good colleagues at that at that job. Um, but I think that was more my experience rather than them actively uh giving that uh attitude.
But there were some good aspects to this job, weren't there, in terms of flexibility to let you do a few things like travelling overseas?
Yes, yes.
Um, and you took the advantage of this job to be able to do quite a lot of travelling, is that right?
Yes, so the point of me taking, um, well, I took the job in the summer, but between my years of uni. And then I was lucky enough to be, uh, they said, if you need a job when you come back from uni, let us know. And I knew I wanted to travel the twenty seventeen immediately after uni, kind of like my gap year. Because I did, I went straight from school to uni. So I knew I wanted to travel. I built great connections through some exchange students at at Wollongong. They were in, they were in America. So I knew I had good contacts there and I could have a good trip. So I finished uni in November of twenty sixteen and worked from November to June. And then took off overseas for a couple of months. And and again, they were super flexible, the business, and they allowed me to go and come back. Um, after the trip. And I also continued the job for another full sort of fifteen months and travelled again um with my brother this time, also in America. And then um, yeah, so that they were very, I was very fortunate to uh end up in that situation and have that flexibility from from them. And they were very nice and and I still in touch with a few of those people.
So you're still in touch with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, now, uh, you've done some volunteering and one uh bit of volunteer work that you did. Was from music festival called Ability Fest.
Yes.
And that's a a festival that, among other people, but Dylan Allcott organised. And the first one was in about April twenty eighteen, is that right?
Yes, I think so, yes.
And so you were volunteering for the music festival?
Yeah.
What can you tell us about this particular music festival? What was special about this one?
So Ability Fest was created and designed purposely for people with disabilities. Taking into account a lot of different accessibility and inclusive needs. Because I think um a lot of people with disabilities haven't been able to attend music festivals in the past because of access needs. Whether that be um to a bathroom or a lot of festivals are in fields and in paddocks and in big venues that's hard to get across and through. So Ability Fest was a bit smaller and a bit uh and a bit easier to get around. There were um, so for example, there was matting put down, creating hard and solid paths for someone in a chair to roll. Roll over easier, even someone could feel comfortable walking on it because it wouldn't be uneven.
I think there was a bit of uh wheelchair crowd surfing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Festival.
Yeah, I've done that.
How was that done?
Yeah, yeah, you just ask people who are able to lift you up above the audience and and enjoy that. Um, so I've done that um at Ability Fest and also other music festivals. And it's nice when you have a a couple of brothers that are just as crazy as you are and are willing to to put you up above the. And it's a good viewing area, um, so, yeah.
And uh at this festival, uh every performer also had an Auslan interpreter on stage. And I think one of the Auslan interpreters sort of got a little bit of notoriety because it was rapping with one of the rappers, is that right?
Yes, yeah, so they that that got a bit of um, sort of it went viral online because they were able to keep up with the with the rapper's lyrics. And 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 they move very quickly. Um, I don't know how that the, I couldn't do that. But it's a great skill for someone to be able to keep up with that. And again, it it shows how inclusive. And and that has, since Ability Fest, I've noticed it more and more at live events such as music. And because I've seen how inclusive it can be for some people um who are hearing impaired.
So when you were doing the work at Ability Fest, that's when you met Dylan Allcott, is that right?
Yes, yeah, so I was, I happened to be the only volunteer staff in a in a wheelchair and with a disability. So he would, um, before the event started, because we were there to to get ready, um, we had a good chat and and I met. And then he just happened to be in in Ubriwodonga doing a um corporate engagement. And we met again, I was there and he goes, oh, you were you were at Ability Fest. And and um I said, yep, and and then I was able to, he uh said I should come down to Melbourne. And and meet some of his colleagues at at Get Skilled Ac- Get Skilled Access, which at the time was a relatively new uh company and new business.
And that um meeting Dylan Dylan, he said, drop us your C V and you did that.
Yeah.
And so where did that lead to?
So I've done with Get Skilled Access a a couple of different, um, what they call awareness training. So I will go in with my lived experience of having a disability to, I've I've spoken to a couple of different organisations, both government. Uh, and private and I just, and we sort of talk about employment for people with disabilities, how important it is to employ people with disabilities. And we try and break down some barriers and and sort of uh re-inform and re-educate maybe if anyone has a any misconceptions. Or different ideas of disability. And and I like to think that that telling my story and and showing what I've been able to achieve has has helped di- different people.
You've been part of a campaign called Remove the Barrier Campaign. So you were filmed for part of the Remove the Barrier Campaign. Do you want to say something about that?
Yes, I was able to get that through Get Skilled Access. Again, I was offered that opportunity to be a part of that campaign. And that had was involved, that was a T V commercial and online campaign. Where we would highlight that people with disabilities face invisible barriers. So the um that involved me um pushing on film into an office door. And I was stopped while other um typically developed people passed me. And the the point of the campaign was that, yeah, people with disabilities face invisible barriers. That they, and then lead meaning they can't even get access to the same opportunities that others do.
So working with uh Get Skilled Access has really sort of shifted your focus a little bit. From perhaps where you expected you might start to really doing a lot of advocacy work in the sector, is that right?
Yeah, and there was a time when I was a bit younger that I didn't want want to be in that that space necessarily. I just wanted to have, you know, use my marketing degree to to have a reg- you know, regular marketing job. But then I was sort of back to that sort of create your own path. And I sort of fell into this advocacy role and and consulting role. And and that's been really uh really rewarding and I've I've met some, had some good connections, met some good people. And it's some work I want to continue as as long with uh comedy and other sort of keynote speaking and public speaking engagements.
And I think you mentioned just a moment ago about also doing some work with another university. So this is work that came up in October last year. So you're a consumer investigator. What does that mean?
So basically, I I interpret it to mean that I am uh bringing my lived experience. And sort of consulting and helping shape the the study and how how we uh produce the materials. And um and inform, and helping inform the uh the researchers. Um, of things that they may have missed due to not having lived experience of disability.
Yeah, and um is that an ongoing role or just a a shorter term project role?
That has been ongoing for since October last year, but we're hoping to wrap up in uh, I think about May next twenty twenty one. So that's been um, but it's been a great experience to be part of. And oh, yeah, it's uh, I hope that that's the sort of work I can con- can continue.
Yeah. What's the future hold for you?
I think more more of that sort of consulting work. I I want to keep doing that and and comedy as well. Now that hopefully we can get comedy up and going again. Um, but I just, yeah, I want to sort of, I think, because I have the capacity and the ability to, and I'm happy to be. Um, but I just, yeah, I want to sort of, I think, cause I have the capacity and the ability to, and I'm happy to be, you know, in the public eye, be on a stage and telling my story. And I hope that that can, that can help people that with disabilities that may not be able or willing to do that. Um, and I, I hope that I can continue that sort of work.
Now, you've put something in right at the end of your statement, if you've got a copy there, it's on that very final page. It's paragraph fifty-two. And I wonder if you could just read that to the commission? And then I might just ask you one or two questions from that final paragraph.
Yeah, no problem. So I've said here that I believe that with a disability, we have to be extraordinary to be ordinary. And what I mean by that is, um, we have people like Dylan Allcott or Kurt Fairley who have done amazing things and other Paralympians that have done amazing things. But I think we still have a big gap in how, in how we perceive disability generally. We, um, people are surprised sometimes when I'm out and about doing things and working. But then they always see Dylan Allcott and Kurt Fairley and the other Paralympians do their amazing sporting achievements. And think that's what you have to do to be noticed, uh, when having a disability. I think when I was younger, I felt this, you know, pressure sometimes that if I want to be noticed and relevant, I have to have a gold medal or, or go to the Paralympics or do something extraordinary.
Do you still feel like that?
I, not as much as I used to. But again, I think my work is leading down that path of, of definitely being a little bit out of the ordinary and I'm happy with that. But I think my point with that statement was, um, that so many people with disabilities just want, uh, access to normal, like a normal life or their normal life. And, and be able to have a regular job and a career and, and friends and fa- and a social life. And sometimes I think our perceptions don't lend to that. I think I had a friend who also has a disability. Say to me the other day, he goes, it's, it's hard to be average with a disability. You'd be, you'd either got to, you've got to do something out of the box to, um, to, to make it, you know, for people to acknowledge that you've, you've achieved something.
So taking that into the area of work, for people with disability looking for work and hearing your story today, what's your advice for young people with disability in terms of looking for work into the future?
I think for, for, for me, it would be figure out what you're capable of and what you can do to the, the best of your ability. And, and work on, also work on that capacity the best you can and, and find some, some good, put some good people around you and, and, and find a good support network. That, that might not be your family. For me, it was my immediate family. But for others, it may not be, but do your best to find a good support network and, and, and really make the most of, of your capacity. And, 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 and that should hopefully, uh, create some opportunities and, and hopefully you're given those opportunities.
And you've done a lot of, um, talks and advocacy work, uh, to try to help organisations, including employers, to be more inclusive. So as a young person, what's your advice to employers? You reflect back on your own employment experience. Now, what, what little things could employers do that would make a big difference?
I think if you say, if you interview someone with a disability and you have any concerns or you're uncomfortable with their accessibility needs or what they're capable of, ask them. I think I've had my bad experiences, as we've spoken about. I was never asked how I could do things or if I was capable of doing, doing a job or a part of the role. I think if you're uncomfortable or unsure, um, ask the questions and have the conversation early and get, get as comfortable as you can with, with, uh, hopefully a future employee with a disability. And, and then that makes the, the person with a disability more comfortable. And I think you'll find that, um, we're just as productive and just as valuable as, as anyone else in the, in the public.
Mr. Hunter, uh, that time has also gone very quickly, but thank you so much for coming from Aubrey and sharing your experiences with us today. Some of the commissioners might have some questions for you.
Thank you. I'll ask first Commissioner Atkinson, who is in our Brisbane hearing room. And I think you can see Commissioner Atkinson on the screen.
And I'm sure you're not asking me, Chair, because I once was an actor with ambitions to be a comedian. Look where I've ended up, Mr. Hunter. Uh, so good luck.
Yeah.
No, I think I'm probably the wrong age group to ask you questions. Thank you very much for your evidence. And, uh, I, I very much enjoyed it. And I hope that all your ambitions do come to fruition.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galvally, who's in Melbourne.
Um, thank you for your evidence. No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, who is here?
I have no questions. I'd love to say give us three minutes, but.
I was gonna, I was just going to say, I was waiting for my colleagues to ask you the obvious question, which is, can you do a routine for five minutes? But I think I, I think I better not.
Maybe, maybe off the record.
Anyway, you've said that, uh, your ambition is to be on a stage telling a story. Well, you just had for forty minutes, you've been on a stage telling your story and we're very grateful to you for doing that. It's been enormously helpful to us.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you. And as with the other commissioners, we wish you all the best for your career.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, commissioners. Just dealing with the formalities, could Mr. Hunter's statement be marked exhibit nine point eleven?
Yes.
And then if we can have, uh, a short adjournment, say have ten minutes. And then our final witnesses are joining us from Melbourne.
We, we'll do that. Thank you. We'll take an adjournment for ten minutes and resume three twenty in Sydney time, two twenty, uh, two twenty Brisbane.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Ms. Asma.
Thank you. Our final two witnesses, uh, this afternoon are giving evidence together. One will be familiar to the Royal Commission. So welcome back Professor Anne Kavanagh.
Hi.
And with Anne Kavanagh is Alexandra Devine, soon to be Dr. Devine. But we're about two and a half weeks off the concurral of your, uh, PhD. So first of all, before I ask, um, questions, uh, of these witnesses, they both need to give their oaths or affirmations.
Thank you, Professor Kavanagh and Futative Dr. Devine for, uh, joining us today. You're both actually emerging from what seems to be the gloom of Melbourne, but we can sort of pick you out there on the screen. If you would be good enough.
Are we too dark?
A little bit dark.
Okay.
But what can you do about Melbourne? It's, uh, habitually in the dark. If you could, if you wouldn't mind following the instructions of my associate, uh, she will administer the affirmation too.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
I might just need you, if you can, on occasions to lean a little closer into the microphone. But Professor Kavanagh, can we start with you? You have, uh, given evidence at a previous hearing of the Royal Commission, public hearing number five into the, um, impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic on people with disability. But can I ask you just to confirm again that you are Professor Anne Marie Kavanagh?
Yes.
And you are an epidemiologist and public health physician?
Yes.
And you are a fellow of the Australian Faculty of Public Health Medicine and a fellow of the Australian Academy of Social Sciences?
Yes.
And you, um, hold the inaugural Chair in Disability and Health? And you are the Academic Director of the Melbourne Disability Institute at the University of Melbourne?
Yes.
And now, um, Ms. Devine, um, welcome to, uh, the Royal Commission. You work with Professor Kavanagh and you are a research fellow with the Melbourne School of Population Global Health?
That's correct. Yes.
Right. And can I ask you to tell the Royal Commission a little bit about your research work? The commissioners have an outline of evidence and a summary of your C V. And I'll get to dealing with that outline in a moment. But can you tell us a little bit about your background and your particular areas of research?
Yes, certainly. So I have been with the University of Melbourne for fifteen years now, mainly focused on mental health and disability inclusive development. So working for a number of years on research and technical advice in low and middle income settings to try and improve inclusion for people with disabilities. And then more recently, as part of my PhD, I was focusing on, uh, disability employment service participants with the lived experience of psychosocial disability and examining how their life circumstances interact with the DES programme to help facilitate or undermine access to employment.
Right. Well, thank, thank you both for agreeing to give evidence. Now, commissioners, we haven't asked our witnesses this afternoon to prepare statements, but they have very kindly worked with the Royal Commission to provide an outline of evidence. And also provided to the Royal Commission a number of documents, including the results and reports of the research that we'll discuss in the evidence this afternoon. So if it's convenient, commissioners, could you mark the outline of evidence as exhibit nine point twelve?
Yes, that can be done.
And then in tender bundle B, where you'll find the evidence, there are a number of exhibits which comprise the reports and some, uh, publications. And that could be marked exhibit nine point twelve point one to nine point twelve point ten.
Yes, that two can be done.
Now, you've both been involved in, uh, a recent research project uh, as a result of the Australian Research Council linkage project. And the project is called Improving Disability Employment Study, the I D S study, is that right?
Yes.
And the aim is to improve an understanding of the factors that promote sustainable and meaningful employment outcomes for people with disability.
Yes.
And Professor Kavanagh, you've been the lead researcher for the I D S project?
I have, yes.
And Ms. Devine, I think you've said that part of the work that you've done for your PhD has involved the I D S project, but not exclusively, is that right?
That's, that's correct, yes.
All right. So before I ask you some questions about the particular results and the methodology used for the I D S project, could I ask, and whoever would like to answer this question is fine, but can you tell us a little bit about this project? And specifically, why did you decide to investigate these issues?
Well, we've known for a long time that the employment outcomes for people with disabilities, um, have been poor and particularly poor in Australia. Um, we also know that, um, one of the major, the, the employment service, disability employment services are one of the major ways in which, um, government invests to try and improve, um, employment outcomes for people with disabilities. So this project actually specifically focuses on, uh, participants who are attending disability employment services, either because they choose to or it's a requirement. And so we decided because that was such a large investment and we still needed to understand how we could get that programme to achieve better outcomes. And it was actually very important to, to focus on this particular programme, noting that previous research had tended to focus more at the service level than, um, whereas we really wanted to talk to the participants in the programme and to follow them a bit more out over time, noting that, you know, some of the K P I's of those programmes, um, are not, are not really looking at some of the things that might be important for people with disabilities. You know, the six month, um, K P I's and so forth. We were actually looking to see whether people managed to stay in meaningful work and, and whether they were able to, you know, their experiences and barriers to enabling them to do that.
What, one of the underlying, um, premises for this work was some work done by now your late colleague, Ms. Milner. And that was her work, uh, finding that there are mental health benefits of employment for people with disability compared to people with disability who are outside employment. And that overall, um, increase in standard of living and, uh, outcomes around social health, economic benefits were significant. Do you want to say something about that earlier research, which really seemed to be the starting point for the I D S project?
Yes, um, we have an ongoing programme of research using, um, uh, longitudinal, existing longitudinal data, but particularly the Household Income and Labour Dynamics of Australia Survey of around twenty thousand adults. Um, Alice Associate Professor Milner, um, did, ran most of that work, although there were others involved. Um, what we, over, over the many years, we basically showed that, um, clearly losing a job was particularly bad for, um, people with disabilities' mental health. And in fact, had a, a, a worse outcome on the mental health of people with disabilities and indeed on the mental health of people without disabilities, which is particularly concerning, given, um, given that we know that, um, actually the mental health often tends to be poorer to start with. We also found underemployment was very prevalent among people with disabilities. And again, that had mental health impacts. And the other, um, issue was, um, that the, um, working conditions of people with disabilities. So often, more often, we, those, um, people with disabilities were in jobs that were poorly paid. Um, where there was, um, high psycha-, so, poor, low levels of job control, what we call psychosocial working conditions, poor psychosocial working conditions, which make the sustainability of jobs poorer and undermining mental health. So Alison sort of saw that as, uh, more broadly, when she was conceptualising it as what we called, um, differential selection into work because of poor, um, workforce, workplace readiness, lack of training and so forth, um, discrimination. Um, we also have done some work on discrimination. And, uh, that leading to less likely to be in work, once you're selected into work, getting the kind, once you get work, um, getting the kind of jobs that are not so sustainable and which also undermine health. And then therefore leading to much more likely to leaving the workforce or losing your job. So this, and this cycle obviously repeats itself often throughout someone's life.
And, and another, uh, factor was, I think, that there were estimates that the government invests around one billion dollars annually into disability employment programmes. And taking into account some reforms for the disability employment services, so the DESs, in twenty eighteen. You wanted to better understand the perspectives of the job seekers with disability and their engagement with the DES, because, uh, your view is that it's imperative to get this perspective to inform both effective service delivery and also client retention. I think client retention is keeping people in jobs, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. So both from a service provider perspective, in terms of how can they better understand the cohort of people that they are trying to support? Um, but also from the perspectives of, of the job seekers with disabilities themselves. So they, we get a better understanding of what works and what doesn't work within DES, but also to understand some of the broader circumstances that people are experiencing.
Right. Now, the, the I D S project itself involved at what is called a two-way longitudinal quantitative study with individuals with disability who are engaged with the DES providers. So can you just help me a little bit on what does a two-way longitudinal quantitative study actually mean?
Oh, don't we love coming up with great terms to make them, um, not understandable to, to everyone else? All it means is we did two surveys with participants and followed them up, um, at one year apart.
Right. So, um, can I get into some of the methods? So first of all, you know, who were the participants and how did you find them?
So we recruited participants through the employment service providers. Um, we had thirteen partners. Um, we had thirteen partners on this ARC grant, so it was mainly through those partners, but also others. Um, and, and we, so partly it was recruited by the um the cut, the people of the frontline workers, yes, thank you, the frontline workers. And then later through emails with the um, with the two participants from the service providers. Making clear however, that none of that information was shared with providers and that was provided to us anonymously.
And was this uh survey, they had a national focus to it or was it limited to particular areas?
Had a national focus, but naturally by the fact that we only had a certain proportion of the DESs involved, it means it's not, you know, it's not a representative sample. There's really no other way to set, to sample uh DES participants um easily. So we had to do the best we could in terms of getting as much natural, national representation, as much representation of the broader community.
Right, so in the report at page seven, you've got some, if I use the shorthand infographic that um tell us a little bit about the age, gender, location and disability type of the participants. And we'll put that up on the screen and I'll ask you a few questions about each of those matters.
While we're doing that, I want to know what was the prize that was part of the incentive to join the survey?
So, so they went into a um, they went into a draw to win an iPad at the end and they also received a ten dollar um gift card or voucher that they could use.
Okay.
Very good.
So looking at the infographics there, the first graph is about age and that identifies participants ranged in the age from eighteen years to sixty five. And most participants were aged between eighteen and thirty five or forty five and sixty five years old. And um, did you consider that that was sort of a, a reasonable spread of ages? So you didn't look below uh the under eighteens, but you started from eighteen and then up to sixty five, assume as the ordinary expected retirement age, is that right?
That's correct. And also because the majority of DES participants, unless they're participating in the Eligible School Leave A Programme, the majority of participants are over the age of eighteen. Um, but we do have a slightly younger population within the survey than the broader DES population.
So that, that was, uh, I think you've anticipated my next question, is there something about the cohort in terms of age that had any correlation with the particular DES service providers? And who, at least from an age perspective, you're more likely to see with DES service providers?
So, I mean, we don't have the distribution of all the service providers, um. Uh, yeah, um, don't have the distribution of each service providers, but it well could represent that or it could represent um the fact that particular groups are more likely to respond to surveys. So for instance, women are more, um, we know more commonly respond to surveys generally and we do have a higher proportion of women in this sample than is found in the whole DES population. And um, we also do, as Alex pointed out, have um a slightly, a slight difference. It's, it's not major difference in the um, in the uh slightly younger population. But it's not, it's not, I wouldn't think it's a major, a major flaw in terms of the age distribution.
Yep. Uh, and then um, you've just mentioned gender, can I ask you about disability type? And that's the little pie graph at the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
We um identifies that forty four point eight percent, so almost half of the participants had a psychological disability as their main disability type, followed by physical disability and then ASD and then two point seven percent of sensory disability. And then there's a gap there. So what can you tell us about the profile of the people with various types of disability for this study?
So we probably had a slightly higher proportion of people whose primary condition is reported as psychological or psychosocial disability compared to the broader DES population. But it's not far off. I think of the current DES population around, it fluctuates between forty and forty two percent have a primary disa, a primary psychological disability. Um, followed by people with a physical primary condition is around, again, forty to forty one percent. So it's fairly similar to the DES broader population, although we have a slightly higher proportion of people with a psychosocial disability.
Okay. O- over the page, so this is page eight, there's a table of participant demographics. So can I ask you to have a look at that and that will come up on the screen? And just uh explaining that perhaps for uh those following the webcast who uh don't have access to that written material. So eighty six percent of the participants were born in Australia, three percent from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander background, ten percent speak a language other than English at home, ninety percent attended mainstream school. And then there's two categories of the highest level of high school education and then the highest level of post-school education and that covers university degrees or diplomas, but also covers apprenticeship trade or other certificates. So in terms of this as representative of the cohort of people with disability who use DES services, um, can you say anything about that aspect of the demographics?
Yes, so we definitely don't have the same level of diversity as the broader DES population. Um, within the broader DES population, there is an increasing number of people from culturally and linguistically diverse um communities, there's an increasing number of Indigenous participants and an increasing number of participants from refugee backgrounds. I guess one of the limitations of our survey, um, partly because of resources and the way it was conducted is that it was only offered in English, which meant that we, um, while there was an, there was a small number of people um from linguistically diverse groups that the majority of our participants had English as a first language.
Now, the, moving from uh the participants to the survey itself.
So can I just ask a question? Uh, did you determine what proportion of the cohort was on NDIS participants?
Yes.
Yes, we did. And it was a very small proportion. I think in the first wave of the survey, it was around six percent or twenty two of the three hundred and sixty nine participants. Um, and in the, the second study, it was about eight percent, but around the same number.
The first survey was done in two thousand and eighteen and the second survey, um, two thousand and nineteen, just to give you context.
And what, what do those percentages tell us, if anything, about the cohort? About its representative nature as far as uh clients of DES?
We don't really know because there's no publicly available data that highlights the number of DES participants that are accessing the NDIS or vice versa.
Yeah. So we can't actually answer that question. It's not in the demographic profiles of the DES, uh, that DES puts out.
All right. And would I be right in thinking that the group that you got compared with most, with, with, uh, if you like, typical DES clients is relatively well-educated or trained?
Um, well, again, we don't know that information because we don't have that information from the DES population. So we can't answer that question.
Except we were discussing before that we would agree that the um, the DES population is not representative of the broader Australian population of people with disabilities, partly because of the eligibility criteria um to, to, to have access to DES. So it's probably quite likely that the, therefore the subsets in our survey uh have a higher level of education than the broader Australian community of people with disabilities.
All right, so coming back to the survey, so the survey for the first wave was a survey that would take the participants on average between thirty and forty minutes to complete?
Yes.
And without going into every question asked in the survey, the survey covered, covered a number of areas. It didn't just focus on employment and past employment experience, is that right?
Yes.
So some of the aspects that you asked in, questions that you asked in the survey covered areas such as health, financial wellbeing, housing and transport.
Yes, discrimination, yes, those kinds of things, yes.
All right, so can, can I ask you about um why, coming back to what the aim and objective of this particular project was? Uh, asking these questions that go beyond employment. Why did you take that approach? And perhaps just give us a little bit of an overview about why you designed the survey in this particular way, which is sort of touching on broad aspects of people's lives.
Yeah, I think we were very cognisant from the start that the services, and um, Alex can expand on this, but the, the disability employment service is just one aspect of people's lives. And you, and that actually what enables or gets in the way of people being able to get jobs are, are much broader than just simply the service. And so we really wanted to understand things like, you know, can people get to a job? Are there jobs around where people are? Um, do, you know, what's the state of housing and what, to what extent does that actually impact on their capacity to get work? Um, because we didn't, uh, we, we think it's important that, you know, um, we don't look just at one aspect of someone's life, um, to understand what the barriers are and also recognising um what the role of DES is in that context, but you might want to expand on that.
Absolutely. And I think the previous work um done by our colleagues and, and other people in the field have really demonstrated that Australians with disabilities have experienced socio and economic inequalities across their life course and this can have an influence on their employment. And then again, we know that Australians with disabilities are less likely to be in secure employment and that again has an impact on their socio-economic experiences. So it's all very interrelated and we wanted to better under, um, unpack some of those relationships.
All right, so now I'm going to really hand over to the two of you and we've got uh a snapshot of the report. But can you tell us what were the results? And then I'm going to ask you about that, what was either surprising or perhaps um uh, results that met your particular expectations?
Where to start? So I think um, one of the key findings was that among our cohort, around ninety percent of respondents reported that they had worked at some point. But at wave one, only thirty percent, just under thirty percent of survey respondents were currently working.
Yep.
And when you look at wave two, um, a similar amount were working. But what was more significant was that fifty percent of the respondents at wave two had remained unemployed from wave one to wave two.
What is about that two-year gap between wave one and wave two?
But I think it's also important to say that there was some cycling through jobs. So only thirteen percent of um them were actually in the same job as they had been. Uh, twenty six percent had new jobs. Um, and twelve percent had been in work since the last survey but were no longer in work. And as Alex said, forty nine percent had not been employed at either wave, at both waves, sorry.
And yeah, and I'm looking now at, and commissioners will have a copy of the report published in August twenty twenty. And so this is a result of the second wave, is that right?
Uh, probably. No, no, you might have had a non-public draft.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Which we were allowed to make public, is that right?
Yes, I think so, yep.
Yeah.
I've tended it, I've tended it into evidence, so it is public now. Starts in now. So um, so is this the, is this the part that picks up a, aspects of the wave two? Or have I jumped uh too far ahead on that one?
I'm wondering if you're still on wave one report.
So I've got wave one report and um that's the fifteen-page report which the commissioners have. And that gives a sort of brief summary around the areas of employment, experiences with the employment service providers, our wellbeing and then picks up very briefly on some of the external factors. And so that was the result of wave one. And then wave two. Um, oh, that's a different story. Okay. So the wave two reports, right, okay. Sorry, I've got a little confused there. We have got a secret copy of the wave two reports, but I haven't tended that into the.
Yes, it's part of the further analysis document, isn't it? Part of the analysis document, yes.
Okay. So what, so I was just trying to be careful that if I drew you into the, it's a different one. Uh, drew you into any confidential information about the wave two reports. But I think you can tell us about the outcome of the wave one and now wave two study for the ID's project, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry for confusing, okay. All right, so in terms of looking at employment and the outcome of both the wave one and wave two survey, you've just given us a sort of general overview, but looking at the overall outcomes, what would you say was the sort of key outcome in relation to the participants' perspective on their engagement with the DES providers?
Okay, um, so there are a range of things that they, in terms of what they actually wanted from the DES providers. And um, I think um what's interesting is that there are a range of things they wanted from the DES providers. One was actually to make them, help them to obtain confidence in their own abilities. That was a major issue for many people in the survey. Um, the others were um to be assisted in, in um finding jobs, go on.
Yeah, yeah, to find jobs that met their needs. Um, they wanted help from their DES provider to um, to help them develop their skills, to apply for jobs and also to, to gain support once they had a job.
Yes, that was very important that that point was that actually people felt the real need when they were in, once they got a job, to have ongoing support from their DES providers.
And, and I think part of the outcomes of the survey.
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Eastman, to interrupt. Is there a document we should be looking at or not?
No, I guess not. I'm sorry. Sorry. I, I've just got a little confused and that's my fault between the document that you'll find behind tab five and um, and some background material which the commissioners don't have.
Well, just before, just so that I know. The document behind tab five is headed Exploring the Interface of the NDIS and Disability Employment Services. Is that a separate published document?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, that is in the public domain.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
These are just additional analyses we did for the Royal Commission that haven't been published yet.
Now I understand.
Yeah, and I.
But, but you're able to talk about the
Oh, absolutely.
Providing the document. So, all right, I'll try to navigate that as well as I can. But coming back to that, one thing was that the outcome was that people using the DES service all had a, a fairly firm view that they wanted employment. Uh, my understanding of reading the material that you've provided to us is that uh, that's why they were with a, a DES provider. And so even if they were unemployed, there was still that wish to be in employment?
Well, that's not completely true because some, well, they were, did want to be in employment, but that wasn't because they chose to be. but that wasn't because they chose to be with the DES provider, that's a requirement of.
Yeah, there's a mixture. So like the broader DES population, around the overwhelming number of our respondents were engaged with DES as part of their mutual obligations. And then similar to the broader DES population, around twenty percent were engaged as voluntary participants. And I think in terms of, but when you follow that up with what the survey found and also our qualitative interviews, the overwhelming majority of people do want to work and recognize that they require support to work. And one of the, the very few options, or because of their mutual obligations, was to engage with the DES program.
Right, and one, another factor that you looked at is the way in which people found employment. And so what were your findings between wave one and wave two in terms of the way in which people found employment?
So the majority of people that had succeeded in finding and maintaining work did report that the main way they found work was by applying through an advertisement. And a smaller proportion felt that their DES provider had directly supported them to find work. So around in wave one, forty percent of people reported that their main way that they found work was applying through an ad. And around twenty-three or twenty-five percent, oh, sorry, yeah, around twenty-eight percent felt that their DES provider had directly helped them find work.
Um, sorry, Ms. Eastman, to interrupt again, I think we do have these figures in appendix B to the statement. There's, I thought I'd seen them somewhere before, but they, on page ten of the outline of evidence, it's got wave one survey respondents, how main job was obtained, and then wave two respondents, how their main job was obtained.
It is in the back, it is in the back of the state, there's, there's the outline of evidence, there are tables at the back of that, you're completely correct. You just don't have the commentary associated with it.
Sure. So you don't have, commissioners, you don't have the narrative and the discussion about the content of the tables, but you've got the tables.
Can I ask you a question about the statement we've just had made? Which was, you said the majority of people found a job by responding to an advertisement as opposed to assistance from their DES. I've seen some other information in the community generally that suggests that the way in which most people find jobs is through networking. Would you draw a conclusion that people with disabilities either don't use networking or don't have access to that as a means of finding jobs? And that could be a significant reason as to why they're not always successful?
I think that, yeah, we can see we did actually ask them that question and only thirteen percent of the people in wave one who had jobs nominated that as a reason, and fifteen percent at wave two. So I think, you know, it is a hypothesis that we've thought about. We actually did consider putting some questions into IDZ very early on, exactly on the questions that you're asking about networks and how they enable employment, just in the end, we didn't include them, but it is very, as you, as you say, it's a very important way of getting jobs. But did you, in terms of the qualitative work, did you find anything there that's worth commenting on in relation to that?
I do still feel whilst the survey respondents, yes, they didn't report as often as we would have expected that they found the main way they found their job was through connections of family and friends. It was still an important pathway for people with disabilities. But I think it's, it's accurate to say that their, their networks are sometimes smaller than job seekers without disabilities. And even within their networks, they might not have, there might not be the same number of people that can help them apply for work or identify work that they can then engage with and apply for.
One, another factor that you looked at is people's experience of discrimination or their perception of having been discriminated at work. And did your results examine whether a person's disability may have had a greater impact on perception of whether they'd experienced discrimination at work?
Yes, so there was definitely a high level of people, so close to forty percent or even more, depending on the type of disability, reported that they had experienced discrimination. And then different people with different types of disability reported different experiences of discrimination. So some people were, yeah, more likely to report it's discrimination when they were finding a job, whereas others were reporting discrimination within the workplace.
And then.
Could take, that discrimination could take various forms in the workplace, from not being promoted to not even experiencing social exclusion and so forth as well in the workplace.
And did your survey ask the question as to what people did if they felt that they had been discriminated against?
No, we didn't ask that question.
No, we didn't ask that question directly, but when people were asked why they had left their most recent job, if they had indeed left their most recent job, there was an opportunity for them to respond under other. And within that, people commonly reported discrimination as a factor of why they may have left the job, or bullying or harassment.
So, alright, so when, when we've got the table of results as to why people had left their most recent job, that category of other can pick up discrimination for pay, bullying, working hours, a range of reasons, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And in terms of why people had left their most recent job, what was the principal finding in terms of the principal reason?
So the main reason reported was because of their, their health or their disability. And this was followed by let go by the employer.
But then after that, the numbers seemed to drop off a little bit in terms of a range of things. But that also included unable to keep going to work because of transport issues.
Indeed.
But, yeah, although that wasn't really very commonly reported. But there were certainly transport barriers reported in other parts of the survey, people nominating that as a potential reason.
Yeah. And I think the qualitative interviews that we conducted help unpack maybe why health reasons and disabilities were one of the reasons why people left work. And again, it seemed to be linked to the fact that if people were encouraged or placed in jobs that didn't weren't accommodating of their disabilities or actually made their disabilities and health conditions worse, they were more likely to leave employment. If people were not receiving adequate training at the start of their job or ongoing support, then this made it more difficult to sometimes manage their health conditions. And sometimes because of employment, they were unable to continue to access some of their mental and, and physical health supports. So that was a way, it compounded their conditions and therefore they might decide to leave employment or not be able to continue.
Now, Ms. Devine, sort of stepping outside the IDZ project report for a moment, one aspect of research that you did around this time and published under the title, I Don't Think They Trust the Choices I Will Make. That's a piece of research work that you published, being a narrative analysis of choice and control for people with psychosocial disability within the reform of the Australian Disability Employment Services Programme. And you say in that article that within the context of the newly reformed DES, it is assumed, A, participants will exercise choice and control, and B, this will incentivize providers to be more efficient and responsive to participants' needs as providers, aim to improve services to retain existing customers, and compete for new customers, ultimately leading to C, improved employment outcomes. So commissioners, you have a copy of that article behind tab six. And the passage that I just read from was from page two of that article. So against that background of what assumptions around choice and control for participants with psychosocial disability, did your research draw any conclusions as to whether or not those assumptions have been borne out?
I think, and again acknowledging that these narratives were drawn from a relatively small number of DES participants with psychosocial disabilities, that it was fair to say that for the people that we spoke to, very few people were actively engaged or choosing to stay with their current DES provider. There was very few people that felt that they had choice within the system, the DES system, and fewer people that felt that their choice of employment or that their aspirations for particular types of employment were being currently met by their DES provider.
And did the research go behind that to identify why that was the case? Were you able to do that?
Yeah, there are a number of reasons and they're very diverse for different individuals. Some individuals talked about never having their choice and control nurtured across their life. So this might be from parents not providing them with the tools to develop their choice and, their capacity for choice and control. Other people had experienced families discouraging them from, from the sort of life choices that they would make, both in terms of education or employment. So they might decide, have felt that they would like to pursue a career that involved going to TAFE, but that their families had discouraged that choice. Then there was other participants whose life circumstances made it very difficult to have choice and control, whether this be because they're experiencing housing insecurity or unmet needs for mental health. And then there were other participants who, within their engagement within the DES programme, felt that their, their desire to perhaps attend university was undermined or that their aspirations to pursue a particular career pathway were undermined by their DES frontline workers.
So come back to the IDZ project, having completed wave one and wave two, you also drew some conclusions about pathways and barriers to employment for people with disability, particularly vocational barriers, non-vocational barriers and structural barriers. Can I ask you about each of these and please comment on any other additional barriers that you identified? In terms of vocational barriers, what barriers did you identify and what did the research tell you?
So I think across both the IDZ survey respondents and also the qualitative interviews that we've conducted and our broader research, it really talks about these barriers being very interwoven. So in terms of vocational barriers, the most common barriers were people reporting lack of qualifications and skills. But often that might have been because they experienced other barriers such as discrimination in their educational settings and in their transitions from education to school.
And then, sorry, Anne.
Oh, no, if you wanted to, because there are other non-vocational and structural, but you, we can start with vocational.
Right, well, I, I'm happy, I want to cover all three. The structural barriers, I think, sort of collectively bring all of those barriers together. But in terms of non-vocational barriers, what did the research tell you in terms of the key non-vocational barriers?
As we said before, one of them, one of the is the actual health condition itself being, making it harder to work potentially. And then other not really important non-vocational barriers were things like housing, access to mental health services, financial security and so forth. All of those things were important, non-vocational barriers, issues around.
Transport.
Transport. Those kinds of things were very important, non-vocational barriers. But I also wanted to point out, in terms of vocational barriers that we haven't discussed, one of them which kept coming up over both surveys was issues around lack of confidence. I mean, whether that's a vocational or non-vocational barrier is hard to know, but, and how, what's the, what puts, what, what means that people with disabilities lack the confidence is probably a lifelong experience of partially low expectations and so forth. And, but that was, that was an incredibly important vocational slash non-vocational barrier.
On that lack of confidence, did you see any difference between the younger and older cohort of people?
We haven't looked.
Could we make an assumption that older people were less confident than younger people or vice versa?
I think we'd have to take that on notice.
We haven't analysed that, that particular question.
Bringing them together, and I think looking at key structural barriers, is lack of jobs was identified as the most common structural barrier, is that right?
That's correct. And that was one of the most, in the first wave, where people weren't asked about their health conditions in terms of it being a particular non-vocational barrier, the, the lack of jobs was the most, most commonly reported barrier amongst the cohort.
And then discrimination was identified as a significant barrier, was that the second key barrier?
That was definitely a key barrier. That was asked as a separate domain of questions. But yes, that was definitely highlighted both amongst the quantitative and qualitative participants as a key barrier to employment.
Now, what, when you, when you investigated discrimination and people responded to that question, what exactly did you mean by discrimination there? Was it intended to have a legal meaning in the sense that it's used legally? Or was it a more layperson's perception of?
Definitely, yeah, definitely. When you tend to ask about discrimination in surveys, and this happens in ABS surveys and so forth as well, you ask them whether they've experienced discrimination or unfair treatment with respect to some particular thing. And we asked them whether in general they'd received, experienced discrimination because of their disability or health condition. And then we asked them when they looked for, for a job, when they applied for the job, and then when they were at the job interview. So we asked them at those three stages. And then we asked them if they were employed, whether they were discriminated in terms of the tasks that they were asked to do, how much they were paid, the supports that were put in place in the workplace, whether or not they were promoted, and whether they experienced discrimination discrimination or unfair treatment from other employees or customers and clients of. Yep.
So looking at that issue of discrimination, its focus really was on the perception of the person with disability about how they were treated by reference to outcomes in employment. So either not getting workplace supports, not being included, et cetera, is that one?
That's correct.
Now, taking the whole of wave one, wave two and the material that you provided to the Royal Commission, where do you go with this research? What's the next step, coming back to the starting point, which was the objective of this survey and research was to identify better ways of developing policies, but to also bring in the perspective of people with disability for the purpose of policy development. Where do we go with this research?
I think one of the key. I think one of the key findings from the research is that currently there is a big investment in the DES programme. But because of broader structural barriers, um it's very difficult for the DES programme to adequately support job seekers with disabilities to find and maintain work. So I think if we are actually going to improve employment outcomes, both for the DES population and for Australians with disabilities more broadly, there does have to be greater investment in those structural barriers. So that means um particularly when we're looking at a post-COVID economic recovery and we're looking to generate jobs, that we look to ways to make sure that we're generating enough jobs that also meet the needs of people with a diverse range of disabilities.
Hmm. I, I would, I would say that too. If you look at the DES programme in isolation in terms of reform, I don't think that's the way you can actually generate jobs because I suspect part of the issue is the um it, we really do have to deal with the structural barriers and the structural discriminatory barriers that go across people with disabilities' life course. And so it's a multi-level, multi-promed approach. If you think simply in terms of concentrating on the person with a disability without changing things and levers around that, it's not, it's not going to um lead to better outcomes. And I think that um the not being in employment, um experiencing not being able to get employment is very undermining of confidence and so forth as well. So I think there's an issue around um issue around kind of those, those kind of building, the the more broad structural issues, but also taking care not to undermine people's confidence um and so forth. So I think, I think it's a very broad, it's a slightly different way of thinking about where you, how you influence employment outcomes.
Hmm. Your, your research projects are um very detailed studies, either from a qualitative or a uh statistical perspective. Um, and please forgive my ignorance, but I'm finding the material, this is not a reflection on what you've done, quite difficult to understand how all of these programs link in one with the other. Um, it may be due to my lack of information on some matters, but I'm just wondering, if I want to find out, or the Royal Commission wants to find out, for example, what proportion of people in receipt of the disability pension uh at any given time are NDIS participants? Can we find that out? Is that easy?
No. So I I can answer that question for you. Um the, well, the NDIS collects information on the proportion that are on DSP. What you can't for find out so much, so easily is the proportion of people on DSP who are NDIS participants.
I see. And can, if I want
Oh, sorry. The, the only way to start to get that information, I don't know to what extent you know about the National Disability Data Asset, but the only way we're going to be able to get that information, um, and I have to declare I'm on the advisory committee for that, but is to link NDIS data with social security data.
Okay. And if we wanted to find out the sources of the clientele of DES or DESs, however you describe them, that is, whether, what proportion, for example, were part of the mutual obligation system or what proportion had been compulsorily referred by send the link, what proportion were self-referrals? Would we be able to find that out easily?
Yes, that is available. So the um Department of Social Services releases monthly data on the DES uh population. And that does describe the proportion of DES participants who are receiving uh now what's job seeker or are receiving the disability support pension or who are engaged with DES under mutual obligations, which I think currently in the last monthly reports is around close to eighty percent are engaged with DES under mutual obligation and a fewer, around twenty, less than twenty percent are voluntarily engaged.
Right. So that there is a certain amount of basic information concerning uh the way in which these systems operate at a high level. So if I want to better understand this, I need to go about finding out some of this basic information and then the more detailed el- uh analyses of what's wrong can fall more readily into place.
Yes.
Sometimes, sometimes it's better for people who don't know a lot about a system to start at the beginning.
No, I think that's very true. The other thing I would comment too is that we're talking about the Disability Employment Service System. A lot of people with disabilities still are, about half of them seeking jobs, I understand, go through the Job Active Programme.
Hmm.
Which isn't a specialised programme for people with disabilities, but it's the general programme.
Yes, that's correct. So there's approximately um over a around three hundred thousand job seekers with disabilities currently engaged with Disability Employment Services. And I think around two hundred and fifty job seekers with disabilities accessing um support through the mainstream Job Active Programme.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. There is more information on that. The difficulty you will get is getting information on the intersections of DES and NDIS. And that's more complicated.
And that uh is the report from August twenty twenty. In the material where you explore the interface of the NDIS and the Disability Employment Services scheme. So I think um uh Ms Devine, this is a a project that you've been involved in and that project identifies a number of areas and priorities for future research. But just in the time that we've got available, could you give us a a broad summary of what the findings of this recent research is?
So this research, again, it, it correlates with what we found in the IDZ research in terms of uh people finding it difficult to access the NDIS, people finding it difficult to access disability employment so, so service programmes. Um, and then for people that, uh participants of both having difficulty navigating that interface. So, for example, someone might be an NDIS participant and have employment as a goal, but not have any support through their NDIS package to engage with DES or not have any support to help them overcome their barriers for employment. And there might be other people who, within their NDIS package, do have employment support, they're encouraged to access the DES programme as part of that, but they're not receiving the level of support that they require through, through the DES programme. We note, uh, a number of stakeholders talked about problems more broadly in terms of there is still um low expectations of the work capabilities of young participants on uh who are engaged with the NDIS, but also more broadly that that then impacts on their access to work experience, as we've heard from a number of the witnesses this week. And then that has an impact on how they engage with DES and then the labour market more broadly.
All right. So I think as the chair says, it's a complex system and we've deliberately taken the approach that we have is to see these systems through the eyes of people with disability who use the system. And I think the commissioners are getting a, a sense of, from that perspective, it's a complex and sometimes very opaque system. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
One thing I just wanted to say to the chair was also that some people in the NDIS would not actually be eligible for DES if they were classified through the job capacity assessment as not being able to do more than eight hours a week of work.
Yes, we heard, we, we heard about that magic number yesterday.
So I just thought I'd, yeah, so you can see that there is sort of people across these different systems. In some areas they overlap and in some areas they're separate systems and it's pretty complicated.
And it is very difficult to navigate. I think um potentially there are a lot more opportunities opening up within the NDIS in terms of pe- people, younger participants are now able to access support from an earlier age. Um, but again, these are fairly new supports. The markets and the services are not necessarily at scale. Um, so yeah, that is definitely an area that we hope to to follow in future and and better understand how younger and older participants, both within and outside of the NDIS, can access employment supports.
If we wanted to find a nice, simple guide to take us through this, that started at A and went finished up at Z, where would we find this nice, simple?
You wouldn't.
Well, I, I really liked um yesterday, the Inclusion Australia. They, they also talked about, you know, the challenge of developing a nice, simple guide um to support people with disabilities, navigate these different systems. And I think um from my understanding, you will hear later from, from other um people with lived experience and other people within the sector that really try to support people with disabilities to navigate this, whether that be through local employment networks um or different training providers. But I think that is one of the key issues that currently not enough people with disabilities and their families are well enough informed or supported to navigate the different services and systems.
Yeah, that, at, at the moment, I'm worrying about commissioners not being
Yeah, no, I thought that was your question. Actually, I did think that was your question. Um, I, I don't, I don't see an easy, I, I haven't seen anything that sets all of that up easily. Do you?
No, I think
We've had to learn ourselves.
Yeah. I think within the NDIS, I think the um the online portal does provide a really good overview of what supports are available within the NDIS. And within that, they talk about what supports are available outside in terms of DES, the DES programme. Um, but I guess what they don't necessarily cover is all the other programmes, both within the private and um other government programmes that, that people might be able to have access to. So.
Looks, looks like we might have found a couple of good PhD projects.
Indeed, indeed.
Uh, that, can I thank you both very much for your time this afternoon and walking us through the IDZ project? And the commissioners have copies of the other projects that you've both been involved in and publications. I'll just check before we finish for the day whether any of the commissioners have any additional questions.
Yes, thank you. I'll start with Commissioner Galvall. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you very much. No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson.
Um, one of the witnesses we had today uh and his father talked about the lack of jobs uh being the major problem that they were facing. And is that, do I understand correctly, that is on page twelve of your outline of evidence? That's what you set out as being what people reported as being the major barrier to employment?
Absolutely. So alongside um the, the experiences of long-term health conditions and disabilities, the lack of jobs that meet people's needs and aspirations um and aligned with their capacities is a significant issue for, for our cohort and and we feel the broader population of Australians with disabilities.
And, and may, and is likely to be increasing as we move in out of um in the current economic circumstances with COVID.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. So I guess it logically follows, if lack of jobs is the problem, um is, is there a need for Australia to experiment with ideas of uh incentivising employers to employ people with disabilities, either by financial incentives or theatres, which somehow or other perhaps require, I mean, for example, over in Europe, they've tried quotas. Are you suggesting to us we need to do something like that in order to create, because the, 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 the jobs have come and gone over the last twenty years and the level of disability unemployment has remained the same. So it seems to be just producing more of them or having less of them makes almost no difference to the graph. How do we move it?
I think um, I think we have to probably tackle it from both the supply and demand side. I think absolutely generating more jobs is crucial, that meet those needs and aspirations. But again, I think it comes back to addressing those underlying socio-economic inequalities as well, um both in terms of we need to improve housing, we need to improve transport, we need to improve mental health services. Um, so I think, yes, lack of jobs is huge and creating more jobs and potentially trying targets is part of the solution, but we have to address those socio-economic inequalities first, or at the same time.
In terms of financial incentives, um I guess the evidence is, um we don't fully understand the evidence on, on, on how they, how well that works. Um, and secondly, if we do come up with financial incentives, we need to be really careful that they don't create perverse incentives. Um, and those kind of perverse incentives include, you know, you keep people in a job for six months and they, they, you know, end up then losing the job at the end of six months and then they bring another person and they have that job for six months. And so you end up churning, or indeed even the same person going out for a while and then coming back in again. So we need to be really, really careful about um those perverse incentives. But um and really understand how you um can influence employers potentially through financial incentives, but making sure it doesn't create those. Um, and quotas are certainly something that's definitely worth talking about. I mean, I think the fact that, and I think government leading the way is absolutely critical here. A lot of private industry has done a lot better with this. Um, so yes, um we've been talking about that for a long time in terms of quotas.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Professor Kavanaugh, and thank you, Ms Devine, for all your detailed work and for explaining it to us so clearly. That's a very great help to us. We'll carry on with our investigations as she proceeds. I have the feeling that maybe we should have applied for an extension to two thousand and thirty-three, but we'll have to manage it the best we can. Thank you very much for your assistance.
No problems. Okay. Do we leave?
Commissioner, that concludes the evidence for today. We can adjourn to ten thirty Sydney time tomorrow, nine thirty Brisbane.
Yes, we'll adjourn until then. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.